Okay, I'll go ahead and open this comprehensive plan retreat and I will go ahead and turn it over to Christina.
Good morning, council. Thank you for joining us in a retreat today to discuss the comprehensive plan. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Carla Bowden. She is our planning consultant with Cross Sound Consulting. She is the one who's been helping me while we and the department while we're going through this transition process. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Carla. Thank you.
Great. Well, good morning, city council members. It is my pleasure to be with you this morning and for this afternoon. I also know that you have a long day today, and so I just want to thank you all for taking the time out of your schedule and your life to come and spend time with myself, Christina, Travis, to talk about something that's really important for the city that I know that you know about, but we're really going to dive deep to overuse that or to use the overused phrase. And in the comprehensive plan, the Growth Management Act, the obligations of the city, and the things that you can do and that we want to do for planning for the next 20 years for the city of Squim. So a little bit about me, I am a planning consultant, but prior to doing that, which was just been about the last three years, I've spent 30 years in municipal planning, working for a city a lot like Squim. Actually, it reminds me a lot of it for the city of Paulsboro. And I ended my my tenure there as planning director a couple of years ago. If you knew Barry Barazowski, that was one of your planning directors. He and I worked together for many years. We're still friends. And so I know a lot about Squim from him because of course, when he was in Paulsboro, he lived here in your community. And so it is my pleasure to be with you today. And when Christina asked if I would help during the transition, it was a pretty easy yes to come and join in on the team and and to join you in your, you know, in your efforts for comprehensive planning. I do have a presentation that we're going to be walking through this today. I've given you the hard copy of it. I encourage you to take notes. It's going to be a lot. I'm going to go over a lot of things today, so I encourage you to go through that. I don't. I know that you got the presentation that I gave to the Planning Commission, which was just a really high level, quick, you know, check in. So I know you some of the slides that I'll be going over today, you'll have seen from that, but a lot of them are new. And then the format of the day is that I will be giving you a lot of information in the morning. And then we will have a couple of we'll have a couple of check in times where I'd like to hear from you. Then we'll have lunch together. You will have I'm going to encourage you to chat with each other about some things that I'm going to leave you with before the lunch session to just think about and to talk to your fellow council members about. And then we'll come back at the afternoon session with again, some high level kind of introductions and then really would like to work with you and hear what your preferences are and kind of your thoughts about the future of Squim. So with that, I'm going to turn on my clicker here. Heather got me set up and we will see if I can. Okay. Oh, it might not. I don't know. That's true. It might not work. We'll give it to you, but then it also could be operator error. I think it's true. I think it is true that it won't work. It's because it's a PDF. It's.
It's not working with the PDF?
Yeah. Okay.
Let me switch real quick to.
Okay, thank you. So while she does that, my next slide is introductions. And so we'll go ahead and get started with that. And I know that is probably for the benefit of me mostly. But what I would like you all to do is introduce yourselves and if you could share with me and each other when to answer this question, when you have out of town family or friends come visit you in Squim, where do you like to take them to give the flavor of the town? And it can be anything at all. So I am going to start with Christina. And we can go around the table.
Yeah. So purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross, City Attorney, interim D C E D Director. And your question was the what do we like about the town?
No, when you have out of town guests or family come visit you and they're going to stay here for a little bit, where do you take them in Squim or their surrounding areas, but preferably Squim, to show them about the the community where you live and what you love about it?
Wonderful. Thank you. So I think probably the first thing that we do is, you know, just just bring them into town and the wonderful little, you know, the downtown and all of the little shops and stuff in the area, little, you know, ask them what they like. And and, you know, there's some great restaurants that are starting to pop up in the area, which is always a lot of fun. You know, the amenities that surround the area, you know, if a guest is interested in lavender, obviously, we have we obviously, we have lavender. But, you know, the hiking, the access to the parks, the, you know, the. One of the things that people are always talking about is the friendliness of the people that are here. And so I think that is just really important. And I know that I'm not answering your question in precisely the way they asked it.
Okay.
But it's hard for me because so many of my friends have been here so many times. So, which I think actually says a lot, right? When when they keep coming back, I think that says exactly what we're what we're talking about. And it's it's that, that, you know, the je ne sais quoi, I don't know what factor about the city of Squim that I think everybody appreciates so much. So with that, I'm going to stall a moment longer. So.
We'll go ahead and go to.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina.
Thanks for stalling as long as you could, Kristin.
Yeah.
So Dan Butler.
That's good.
And gave me time to think of an answer, a couple of answers.
That's right. What was the purpose?
That's right. If it's summertime, then the market down here on on Saturdays, we live about a five minute walk from one of the access points to the Olympic Trail. So going for a walk from the trail is a usual outing for guests. And then we're very fortunate to have a boat down in the harbor. So if it's a nice day, we'll go out on the boat.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Harmony. And definitely Kerry Blake is top of the list. Friends coming into town with kids, so we definitely just go there. I love taking folks to the Dungeness National Wildlife Park. My favorite thing about Squim is that just the nonstop festivals. So that's been really epic and fun to include guests in. Yeah, Farmer's Market included, I would call that a festival all on its own. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Rachel.
Good morning, everybody. Well, Vicki, you might have the same kind of answers where we've lived here so long that it's like it's kind of like a history lesson anytime we take anybody anywhere. So like oftentimes, I'll bring people to Railroad Bridge Park and say, well, this is where we would walk from Gray Wolf in kindergarten and we would crawl inside a giant fish for the salmon festival. And this is also where I got married. And so let's see, we would do that. I would take them to Kerry Blake Park and take them through the Friendship Garden and say, this is where a great volunteer team comes every Tuesday to work super hard and make it beautiful. And we just live at Elk Creek, and so we'll take Elk Creek Apartments. So we'll take the O D T down to Kerry Blake Park. And, you know, this is where I used to take my kids in my hiking pack and we'd walk all the way to Kerry Blake. And it's kind of like an ongoing. I could take them anywhere probably and think of a story to tell them. So lots of lots of fun places and fun stories.
Thank you.
I would also second with Rachel to either Railroad Bridge Park or John Wayne Marina, although also it's a little bit out of Squim, but also Port Williams as well.
Nicole, and I'll give a third for the Dungeness Railroad Bridge area and the facility there that's got all the displays at the River Center. Port Williams also, I like to go down there in Beachcombs. And we like to take people up into the mountains too, on some of the off road trails. And and then just downtown, Farmers Market, Love Peninsula Tap Room. That seems to be where all the locals are and you meet a lot of people. And I love it when the city has events that shut down Washington Street for a couple of blocks. And we have, you know, these kind of street fair type events. So I think that's probably about it.
Thank you.
And I'm Vicki, and I've lived here for almost 60 years. So I usually take people to the Oak Table Cafe because when I was growing up, it was a house. And the people that lived there were, I don't know what the appropriate term now is, little people. So we used to pretend that they were from the Wizard of Oz movie. And but it's a great place to eat. And then also, we always take people to the Railroad Bridge Park and the beaches. And if it's work stuff, I usually take them to the Jamestown Clinic and the Healing Clinic to show them about the awesome things that the tribe's doing in our city, too.
I'm Kelly. Family and friends come to visit, we we always take them to the Oak Table and then walk it off at the Railroad Bridge Park. And we usually end the day at the Tap Room.
I'm going to go ahead and have Matt and Sue, right? Yeah, please. The backup.
I'll do it real quick. So there's about four that I and they've all been mentioned. The O D T, most of my friends love outdoors and are cyclists or whatever. So they all love the O D T. Everybody loves the bay and harbor. The Dungeness Bridge in that area is also kind of a popular site, Farmers Market and oh, Dungeness Bridge and Nature Center, but also the Refuge Center that you mentioned. Harmony is a big thing. Everybody loves the lighthouse in the spit. And then I would, did I say Farmers Market? Yeah.
Hi, good morning, Sue. I think the last, you know, I tend to be kind of a homebody and enjoy when when a family comes over, friends, just taking walks in nature around the house. Last time my mom came out to visit, she's in Bonnie Lake now, we came downtown and enjoyed the Farmers Market and did some shopping. These downtown is just so adorable. So those are just a couple of things that we like to do.
Great. Thank you.
And Sue, I'm going to ask that you pass the microphone to Alex Fain, one of our planning commissioners. And he came in just a moment ago, Carla. So if you don't mind repeating your question for his benefit, that would be great.
Alex, so we're answering the question, when you have out of town guests or family come visit you, what are the places that you love to take them in town?
Oh.
Or the area?
Oh, the area?
Yes.
Well, we usually drive through Kerry Blake Park so they can see that. And then we go probably to Hurricane Ridge and they see it all from there. We we take the ferry to Victoria with them. And then sometimes we set up our RV for them to camp. And we go to the the Dungeness Wildlife area or V A Way Road, set it up there and they can stay there and walk down to the spit and be in a forest. And so I guess. Well, during Lavender Festival, we take them around to Lavender Farms. And this one's really close to our house off West Squim Bay Road. We take them down to John Wayne Marina and love to have a meal there. And we we make a point to drive through Washington Avenue so they can Washington Street so they can see everything there. We love taking them to Sunny Farms to see our really cool little market. And if there's a farmer's market going on, we bring them to that so they can get a real taste of what Squim and the area is all about. And we take them to the the River Center too, Railroad Bridge and for a walk there. And then we try to bike ride also. Actually, we do this a lot and with distant relatives, all our friends and cousins from Minnesota when they come and grandkids from all around the world and all of that. So we have a whole, we go whale watching.
There's a lot.
And there's there's so much.
Yeah.
And by, yeah, it takes it takes a good solid week with lots of planning, several things a day. So.
Thank you.
That's about it.
Perfect. And then Travis, not to leave you out, because I know you were pinch hitting a little bit on the technology.
Yeah, I mean.
So just a few ideas that you like to.
Yeah, so Travis Simmons, he I grew up in Port Angeles, so I do a lot of the stuff over there. We go to the National Park, out to the lake, do the hiking and all that stuff. Here, of course, with young kids, people that come to visit, they want to go to the game farm. So it's like, all right, we can do that for the zillionth time. But, you know, hey, it's it's still good for us and the kids. So the parks, of course, park system here is great. So we go to all the various ones at least once. So, yeah.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for taking a few minutes to to do that, to share your, you know, your stories with all of us. It helps me as, you know, kind of as a newcomer to town. But also I want to, did you hear some of the themes? And I and I love this because this really represents Squim. It's about access to your shoreline and to the water. It's about access to your parks, open space, trails and biking. It's about your downtown, your retail core and the uniqueness of your downtown. And it's about gathering spaces where you want to meet with your friends, family, where you'd like to have a good meal, where you like to have a pint. And all of that is about quality of life. It all together speaks to the quality of life that the city and the surrounding areas provides you as your as residents here. And this is really what we're talking about when we talk about a comprehensive plan. We're going to talk about all of those elements and more. And some of them are not as exciting, but a lot of them are exciting. And they will get you excited about thinking about how do you keep the, how do we retain, enhance and preserve the things about Squim that you all love, that you want to show off to your family and to your friends, while also ensuring that we're accommodating for, you know, expected growth and that we're providing for the housing, the housing that's necessary for that. And so that really sets the theme and the tone for what we're going to talk about this afternoon, this morning and afternoon. So with that, I feel like we might be getting close to it. But you can go ahead if if we want to. I want to go over the agenda, which so you do have the packet of slides in front of you. I did talk a little bit about that already. It's for your use to kind of jot down notes. And then I do have a second packet for the afternoon. But the agenda is the morning session is really going to be about the Growth Management Act. And it's a little bit of a kind of just a lack, for better, lack of better word, that's not coming to my brain. It's not really a lecture, but it's a little bit of an education session in that. We're just going to start from the beginning of like the Growth Management Act, what it requires, what our obligations are under the state law. And then we're going to move to the to the work that has been done by Clallam County, the work that was done in 2024 by your larger consultant, S C J, as far as public outreach and the input that was received during that. I'm going to report out all of that. So that will actually be a couple of slides that will take a little bit of time. And then we'll leave, we'll have a roundtable session about, again, kind of similar to this, where I love to hear from you about what themes you heard as you participated in some of those workshops and open houses of last year. I'll go, then I'll introduce the idea of the land capacity analysis, which is where we compare, where we compare the available land in Squim to the growth allocation. And then we'll have lunch and then we'll again, move into the afternoon session with some some exercises. So with that, do we, are we ready, Heather? It's okay if you want to drive. I'm all right with that, too.
I think at this point, Heather, if we're not able to get the clicker ready for Carla, then you'll just have to manage the slides and move them forward for her.
We can go to slide number four. Yep. Okay, so the next, so this first series is going to be talking about the Growth Management Act. You can go ahead and move to the next slide. And we'll start with the purpose statement of the Growth Management Act or the, yeah, the purpose of it, which is really found in the findings. So it's embodied in the Revised Code of Washington. And that this was adopted, the state legislature established the Growth Management Act in 1990, then did also substantial amendments in 1991. It also, it's it's that with for for the next couple of decades with some minimal amendments. And then the last few years, which we will be talking about, there were substantial amendments. But the Growth Management Act came out of a effort that was from the public, actually, that bubbled up in response to a similar movement that was happening in Oregon at the time about what was being perceived as uncontrolled growth and sprawl into rural areas. And so there was an initiative on the ballot that started it and the state legislature responded again in 1990, 1991. And what the the purpose of it here is that we are going to uncoordinated unplanned growth with the lack of common goals in the public interest is a threat to the environment, to economic development, to the health safety in the high quality of life. And so that sets the tone for everything else that follows in the Growth Management Act. Next slide. And so the requirements of it are, well, I will say that the G M A in 1990 fundamentally changed the way land use planning was done in the state of Washington. And prior to the Growth Management Act, planning was really done on a jurisdiction by jurisdiction basis. Some of the counties were very strong players in that, and cities were more subordinate to county planning. And and yet, everyone kind of had their own rulebook that they played with. Now, there were some parameters in state law, but again, there wasn't a requirement to coordinate with with each other. And so the central premise of the, again, is that unstructured growth and that it requires by managing growth and development, we can minimize these negative effects. And so the way we manage that, the way the Growth Management Act says that we're going to manage it is by doing a couple of things. We're going to protect critical areas. We're protecting natural resource lands. And we're and we're preparing comprehensive. We're protecting natural resource lands, uh, and we're, and we're preparing comprehensive land use plans, and then we're implementing them through, uh, capital investments and development regulations. And this, uh, now 30 or some years after the Growth Management Act seems like, of course. But in 1990, this was actually a relative, relatively revolutionary idea that, um, you didn't, we even had, uh, comprehensive plan maps and zoning maps, what, that weren't even the same. And so you could do that while comprehensive planning was around in 1990, it didn't necessarily mean something if a project came in because you're looking at zoning maps and development regulations. And so it, and then at the same time, land use wasn't really coordinated with transportation planning or utility planning. And so again, this, this was revolutionary and the, and the idea that, that Washington State Legislature wanted jurisdictions to plan holistically in their land use planning and they wanted them to coordinate with their other agent or, um, surrounding bodies like counties. And so, um, the, uh, one of the very first things you did under the Growth Management Act was establishing countywide planning policies where the county and all its jurid cities got together and established, um, some regional plan, uh, policies that everybody was going to follow. Next slide. Please. So the, um, the GMA establishes that there's these state goals. It sets deadlines. It offers direction on how to prepare your comprehensive plan. It provides, um, now, now, today, it provides prescriptive housing requirements in 1990 it didn't, but today it does. And I'll talk, uh, we will talk actually quite a bit about that to, um, today. And it sets forth the requirements for early and continuous public participation. The comprehensive plan has to have, uh, goals, policies and a narrative. And the slide here talks a little bit about what goals are. They're going to be the desired outcomes, policies are principles and the, um, narrative just provides further explanation. And so when you look at your comprehensive plan, you'll see that, um, played out almost to a T. You're going to have a goal, you're going to have policies and then you have narrative that's going to describe those things in, in the city's Squims comprehensive plan. And then most comprehensive plans are going to have a number of appendices with them. That's where a lot of the technical information is going to sit. So, um, some of the things we're going to talk about today, while we're going to talk about it today, they're actually going to live in an appendix to the comprehensive plan because their technical information, they're not going to sit in the policy document. Next slide. So the other thing about the Growth Management Act is it requires ongoing planning. And I love this picture because even though I don't think that this is really how they paint the bridge, um, it gives you the idea, you might have heard the story that when, I know this for the Narrows Bridge, is that when they start painting the Narrows Bridge, when they end, it's time to go back to the beginning. And that feels like land use planning, especially people like me who've been doing it for a long time. Cause we finish one series of comprehensive planning, update all your development regulations, do everything you need to do, which is usually a five to seven year process. And comprehensive plans used to be, um, updated every eight years. The state legislature recently changed it to 10 years. But when we were on that eight year cycle, it literally felt like we just got done and maybe had like a half a year to be like, woo-hoo, and then like go back and start again. So the painting of the bridge is a really good graphic for me because that is actually how land use planning is. We're gonna, we're gonna finish the bridge this year, but we probably don't have to start right away, but we will be working on development regulations, critical area ordinances, and probably by the time that gets wrapped up, we'll be at our five year check in. And so what the state legislature did in changing the eight year cycle is they changed it to 10 years, but now require jurisdictions to do five year check in. So that's that five year number that you see there. And so we're gonna, we'll have a adopted comprehensive plan in 2025 and then in 2030 we'll do a check in. And that can be, um, that, that, the level of effort of that really depends on a number of things, um, like whether the state legislature's changed the laws and, or things are happening in your community that require you to do a little bit more, um, checking in. Next slide. Please, thank you. So this is one of a couple of graphics that we'll show you, and I think you saw this. I won't spend a lot of time. This is actually was in the planning commission packet, our PowerPoint that was in your packet that you got last week. But it really, I think, does a great job to show that even though we're going to talk about land use planning and we talk a lot about land use planning, it, uh, the way comprehensive plans get implemented are a, a variety of ways that you will see as city council members. You're going to see them as part of your capital budget, um, and you're going to also see them as part of, um, programs that you are either sponsoring or that you know of as that's happening in the community. And so starting again from, when you're looking at the screen, starting from the left side, going across to the right. So GMA 3670A, that's the state statute. So if anybody ever wants to, you know, have some reading before, like you go to bed, you could pull up the RCWs and read 3670A. And, um, but we marry that with the community vision and, uh, that's a lot of what happened last year, which we'll talk about. And then those two feed in, so the law and the hopes and dreams of the community feed in together. And that's where we'll start the process of developing our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is made up of three things, which I will go over in detail, policies, maps and a capital facility plan. And then those get implemented again through a budget, through development regulations. And when, what that term is, that's an umbrella term and we're actually going to, you'll hear me use that term a bit today, but development regulations is an umbrella term for like your zoning standards. It's going to also consider your critical area ordinance, subdivision ordinance, uh, your, can, your construction standards for like streets, for utilities. So there is a number of things that fall under that umbrella. And then programs are going to be decisions that you make, um, that actually can feed to your budget, but also just non-capital, um, um, budget decisions, your tax policies, inter-local agreements that you might have with Clallam County, um, with local tribes, your, what your priorities are, um, as a council and as a community. Even though, I, obviously we know that you're not, you know, uh, in charge of the schools, but schools are a part of that, your, um, support or, you know, how the school's operating in your community as well as social services. They're all going to, um, be part of how a comprehensive plan is implemented. Next slide. Is that right? Is that the next slide? Yep. Okay. Sorry, I skipped ahead. I was like, wait a minute. So, um, this slide is actually really, uh, an important slide because, um, that second column is what we're going to talk about a lot today, but let's start on the left-hand column, which was, what happens in this 2025 update? So this is our regular periodic update is on schedule, uh, for, um, for, for Clallam County. Uh, the Growth Management Act assigns deadlines per counties and they have the fastest growing counties be the ones that do their comprehensive planning first. And then Clallam County is in the second wave. And then there's even another, a third wave of 2026 updates. So we're right in the middle of the update process. So we have ones that have just finished in December and we'll have ones that are just starting now for the 2026. So our update is, um, in the middle. And what normally happens for a comprehensive plan update is we get new population, housing and job allocations that are done by the county, which we'll talk about here in another slide. We need to ensure that there's available land and densities to accommodate that allocation. Then, uh, we, uh, as part of the comprehensive plan, infrastructure planning, so your functional plans, your water plans, your plan, stormwater, transportation plan need to be updated or in process of being updated to coordinate with that growth allocation. And, um, and then as, uh, sorry, as well as parks and then any development code updates that are necessary as well. But the GMA landscape is different this year than it has been basically since 1991, which is that, um, there has been a, in my opinion, a, uh, switch in how the Growth Management Act is being administered from the state. And it used to be called a bottoms up approach, meaning the GMA is a planning framework and each jurisdiction would, um, would, within that framework, do its local planning. But now there's a lot of what would be called top-down, um, state directives, especially around housing. So on that second column there on the right, the state legislature has been very busy for the last four years and all, um, I know they've been very busy in all things. Uh, I'm a very many, uh, let me, let me rephrase that. I know that they've been busy in many things that affect municipal governance. So I will only speak about the ones that are regarding land use, but as council members, you probably have heard from some of your other department heads or your city manager about other things that the state legislature has done that is change, you know, changing some of the roles and requirements for the city. For land use planning, um, they have tackled, uh, everything's been under the umbrella of housing. And so the state legislature decided in 2021 in particular, that they felt like there was a need to start do, uh, regulating and providing specific direction to jurisdictions to help, um, enhance and improve the, how, uh, the provision of housing units in the state of Washington. And they did that in a number of ways. They, they touched on a lot of things. And so for, for Squim, starting from the top, which was the most recent, we have some co, uh, co-living requirements, meaning, um, there's, most of these are going to be changes to the zoning ordinances. So some co-living requirements, meaning, uh, a lot of jurisdictions limit like the number of unrelated members that can live in a home. They've taken away that, um, ability to do that. That's just one example. Accessory dwelling units, even though you have an accessory dwelling section of your zoning code, the state legislature has required all jurisdictions, all cities and urban growth areas to allow two ADUs per lot, period. Like it's required. So that will be an update to the zoning ordinance. Um, it allows for an easier time to convert commercial buildings to residential. That's due, that actually deals with a lot of building code pieces to it. So, um, housing units by income band, we're going to spend quite a bit of time talking about that. That is a requirement that the state has established that all jurisdictions, um, are now assigned housing units that, um, by income band. Again, I'll talk, we'll talk more about that. And we have to ensure that we're at least providing for the ability for those units to get built. Then per permanent supportive housing and, um, oh, again, the occupants per dwelling unit. The second, uh, bucket that the state legislature was busy in was climate planning. And, uh, there was a number of things that came out of it, the Climate Commitment Act, um, where that was where some money was getting raised. Some of that money that got raised through, uh, generators of greenhouse gas emissions got put back into the planning world by requiring a, uh, climate planning and resilient, or climate change and resiliency element to be part of the comprehensive plan and gave money out to jurisdictions. So the city does have a grant from Commerce regarding that. And, um, so climate planning is now a piece of this 2025 comprehensive plan. That's new. And, uh, tied to that, although you wouldn't, you won't necessarily see it in climate element is a new requirement for what they call active transportation. So active transportation is the new thing dango word for non-motorized. So for those of you who might've heard of like no, non-motorized transportation, uh, of, you know, the last decade, which is basically walking, biking and rolling, the term the state legislature has now established is active transportation. And so it's taken me all of 2024 to quit saying non-motorized and I'm, I'm getting, I'm almost there now in saying active transportation. So, but basically what that means is for, for those of you that that might be a new term, active transportation means any type of transportation that is not driving your car or riding transit, because you still call transit transit. So anything that's not transit or riding a car or driving, riding in or driving a car is active transportation. And then the third bucket that they, uh, that the state legislature was busy in was development regulations or development standards and permitting. And, uh, because they were hearing from the development community that one of the barriers to housing is the, um, is how long it takes to get a permit to build a development. And, um, and it does take a long time. It can take a long time. There's various reasons for that. Uh, but what the state legislature decided to do was to try to streamline it through their own, um, directives. So they have timelines, they have established timelines that, that local jurisdictions like Squim need to follow as well as some other pieces like, um, develop, it says here, streamlined design review. That isn't necessarily as applicable to Squim. That was almost solely directed at the city of Seattle. In fact, I think they were like looking at you, Seattle, because their design review process was kind of ridiculous and had lots of multi, multi-layers, multiple design review boards. In fact, the state legislature, I think, might've even said no more design review boards. And so it really was a Seattle problem, but we all get to have the benefit of it now. So, yeah, next slide. So a little, a little bit of conversation about why comprehensive plans matter. Next slide. So this is a graphic that I love and I will confess, I will tell you, you guys will appreciate this, that I made this slide and I gave this retreat to the Pulse with City Council, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 years ago during budget time, because I want, I had some things I was asking for. But, see, we'll appreciate that, right? So anyway, the land, land, I always say land use is the center of our universe. It is, it is, but it isn't. But it does drive a lot of city functions. And so this really, you know, these interconnected cogs, which is a graphic that we all, you know, can see, um, in various applications. But it does show that every piece of city governance does, um, get affected by what is happening on the land, how it's being developed, how it's being used, how people are getting to that parcel to live or to, um, you know, to, to visit for a service. And, um, and so it does really touch all pieces. What happens on the land does touch all pieces of what you guys do as a city council. I will also say that, um, the health of a city and especially the financial health of the city is, um, does live in a healthy land use climate that, uh, that as a city is growing, um, that does help ensure the financial health of a city. And so, um, the challenge for you all is that, um, you don't want a city that's stagnant and not growing because that definitely has financial implications. And you, you know, you, you don't want uncoordinated and unplanned growth because that has implications for quality of life. So the sweet spot is how do you find, uh, how do you build a comprehensive plan and development regulations that, that allows for, uh, growth in a healthy and coordinated and cohesive way that also preserves and enhances the quality of life that everybody enjoys, including your new residents who are going to move here. Next slide. So we're going to talk here about the components of a comprehensive plan and I'll walk a little bit, um, through the, these relatively quickly. I was just keeping my eye on the time. I can talk quite a bit, so I'm going to keep myself, uh, reined in on time to make sure we get through all the slides for, and you get a full lunch, um, lunch break. But a comprehensive plan first and foremost is a policy document. And you're going to, that's probably what you're the most familiar with. It's that, what I talked about before, it's those goals, policies and some narrative that kind of talks around what, um, what that goal and policy is trying to accomplish, what maybe if there's unique circumstances that are, um, help explain what that is. So that's what a policy document is here. So this slide gives you some examples. These are examples of goals and policies found in what was called the natural environment or the environmental element. So you're going to have a high level goal that we're going to protect and, uh, and restore ecological functions. And then here's how we're going to do it. And those are the policies. Next slide. Comprehensive plan, uh, is comprised of a number of chapters and the Growth Management Act establishes that there's some required chapters and then there are some optional chapters. The, um, let's see here. The, the main ones are going to be land use, housing, transportation, capital facilities, utilities, shorelines, those are required. Economic development parks and rec are considered optional. There's a little nuance to that. I don't need to get into that, but you know, that your, your comprehensive plan already includes those chapters. And then the new chapter that's not on this slide is climate planning. Next slide. So I am going to take a moment here to talk, the next two slides are going to be about the new requirements that came out of, um, the state legislature being busy that I was just telling you about. So housing, again, as I've mentioned, are, um, is the biggest one. And I know that, um, I will tell you that in the next couple of slides here, we'll have a lot of text heavy. So I apologize for that, but there was a lot to get out for y'all. And that's part of the reason why you have, um, you have the hard copy so you can, you know, take it with you. I don't, uh, you know, it's a lot to absorb, you know, I'm going to go through a lot today, but. But the, the, the growth, the state legislature amended the Growth Management Act as far as it is for a housing element. So the section that they amended extensively was the housing element requirement. So it requires sufficient land capacity for housing needs. It requires moderate density housing options within urban growth areas. I'm just going to pause there for a minute because I just want to explain that when the state talks about urban growth areas, they also, they mean cities. So they don't, in our world, we're like, okay, yeah, the Squim UGA, right? But no, they, when they say urban growth areas, they mean cities and urban growth areas. So what this is saying is that we need to take a look at how we're going to provide moderate density housing options within the city limits. Need to make adequate provisions for housing for existing and protected needs for all economic segments of the community. And that's part, in addition, it intersects with that first bullet about income band. It's what they call permanent or not permanent supportive housing and non-permanent supportive housing. So it's temporary, like emergency housing and permanent emergency housing. And then the last bullet is doing an analysis to ensure racially disparate impacts, displacement and inclusions are at least evaluated as part of the housing element and identifying if there's any needs or practices that need to be repealed, changed or modified. Next slide is on the climate planning. And they, the state legislature added a goal for climate planning and resiliency to the GMA list of goals. They added a requirement for a new element or sub elements. They use the term sub elements as well. As Squim is required to address resiliency either in the climate element or incorporated throughout the plan and adopt a natural hazard or yeah, hazard mitigation plan. Now I just wanted to note there that the climate planning requirement, so like if you were, you know, trying to go to sleep and you wanted to read GMA and you go read the climate element, there have a second provision. It's called greenhouse gas emission reductions. Clough County does not have to do that. So there's two pieces to the climate planning, greenhouse gas emission, resiliency, hazard mitigation has to be for everybody. Clough County and Squim only has to do the resiliency and the hazard mitigation. Yes. Yeah. And thank you for this. Please feel free to ask questions throughout. I forgot to mention that in the beginning, so thank you, Harmony.
Thank you, Carla. Could you talk a little bit more about, I know it doesn't apply to our city, but what is, what is the greenhouse gas piece? And why don't we have to? Do you know, have some?
I do.
Opinion on that? Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you. So good question. So the greenhouse gas emissions are going to be for, they're applying to the jurisdictions along the I-5 corridor that have higher populations and have higher basically vehicle miles traveled. The, the requirements are to establish a baseline for that jurisdiction. Now, if one of you are going to ask me, how do we do this? I do not know. There is guidance Commerce developed guidance and I will be working with a jurisdiction that will have to be doing this. Those jurisdictions that had the 2024 deadline, they did not have to do the climate element. The 2025 jurisdictions were the first ones that had to do it. So y'all are on the, the cutting edge of climate planning. But the greenhouse gas emissions is that you have to establish a baseline for your jurisdiction. You do need to work regionally with that and you need to establish methods, programs and incentives to reduce vehicle miles traveled. What that practically means is that, and this goes back to what we talked, just mentioned earlier, is that it really doubles down on transit and active transportation. So really what the greenhouse gas emission component of climate planning means is that we are really need to be looking at how to provide convenient, affordable and accessible transit and how do we provide shared use paths, multiple ways of traveling around a jurisdiction that gets people out of cars. But essentially that's what it is. It's reducing vehicle miles traveled.
Do practically here, would EV charging stations fall in that category since we're sort of remote to other EVs?
Yeah, so exactly, yes, that exactly. That's a great example. That's appropriate for Squim. And so electric car, electrical, sorry, electric active transportation and then electric vehicles. Yep. Yes.
Just really quick question. So with all of the extra, well, not extra, I guess, all of the new things that we have to add to the comprehensive plan, I'm curious to know, in order to implement some of the things that municipalities would add to their comprehensive plan, does that mean like the state would help by supplementing with funding? Or is it more like, all right, do your best?
So they did as part of the Climate Commitment Act, they used some of that money raised to give jurisdictions money to do their climate planning. So Squim has $150,000 grant for, to do the climate planning. And what there, so we, we are, so the city's doing a portion of that, using a portion of that for SCJ to help develop the climate element. But the city also went in with Clough County to do an update to their hazard mitigation plan, which got, just got released and is in front of FEMA right now to be reviewed. And it will, the city does need to adopt this, the city was involved in it, does need to adopt this plan. We're anticipating, I think Christine and I talked that hopefully by April, we'll be bringing it forward to the city council for adoption. And that actually is 50% of your requirement under the climate planning because the two, the 50% is the hazard mitigation plan and the other 50 is the climate element. And so we're using the grant to, portion of that grant went to Clough County who developed this, the hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome. Next slide. Oh, yeah, please.
And the other 50% was paid to SCJ?
Yes.
I see.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the second, oh, woo-hoo. Thank you, Heather. So the second part that a comprehensive plan is, okay, so the first part is a policy document. The second part is a capital facility plan. And this, the state legislature acknowledged, and again, it was one of the things that I talked about at the beginning of our session, is that capital facility planning is integrated into land use planning. So again, it was one of those really new cornerstones of growth management in 1990. And what it established that rocked the, a lot of people's world is that cities are the providers of urban services and counties are not. And prior to GMA, counties would provide urban services equal to or perhaps even more than cities. And so over the last three decades, you have seen that change where cities are now providers of urban services and counties are, they still do and can, but they are subordinate to county or to city provisions. And the reason for that is, is because growth is allocated and designated for cities. And therefore it is the city's obligation to provide utilities and services. And what that means practically is sewer, wastewater, so wastewater sewer. What, what term do y'all like to use here? Sewer, sewer, okay. As I say, I have a, I have a client that uses wastewater, so I always have to remember which one they prefer. Water, stormwater management and transportation, parks and recreation. So those are your capital facilities. Now there are other, there are other ones. Actually, go ahead and go to the next slide because they will outline what they are. There's other facilities that are, oh, I have it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Christina. In my brain there for thinking, okay. So the capital facility plan will also look at government building, solid waste schools and fire protection. And those are topics required by the Growth Management Act to include in your capital facility plan. Now, capital facility plans can be a couple of things. They are most often an appendix to the policy document, but the one that I did for Pulse Board a number of years ago, I made it as like volume two, two. So volume one was a policy document, volume two is the capital facility plan. So it's really going to be what a preference is for the city and how they want to present that. I also want to note that the capital facility plan is going to speak a lot about your budget, but it's actually not fully your budget. So GMA's consideration for capital facilities are for what's necessary for new growth. But your budget is going to be in consideration of all facilities. And so the budget is actually just as much. So the capital facility plan is informed by your functional plans that your public works team, your public work director, your city engineer oversee. So that's your water system plan, your sewer system plan, your transportation master plan, parks and recreation, if you have a park, parks and recreation plan. The, those get integrated into the capital facilities and they get part, the projects get prioritized through your budget process, through your six-year CIP. Actually, I have a graphic for that. And so if you start in the left-hand pie there where it's your city functional plan updates, you, I use the term functional plan. It kind of, you might use a different term here, but that again, is those utility planning, transportation planning, parks planning. That develops, those plans get developed using the growth allocation, the growth target that's going to be provided by Clough County. That will develop a 20-year list of projects that's required by GMA that you identify what your 20-year project list is necessary. But those get prioritized through your six-year CIP process, which is part of your annual budget process. So that's where your department heads and your finance director will prioritize which capital projects are necessary are for that six years to ensure adequate provisions of your utilities. And then you implement that through your capital project improvement. So like installing, for example, you know, sewer mains or putting in a new lift station or developing a new sidewalk or shared use path or developing a new park. Those are all your capital projects. And then the circle just continues on. So the functional plans, some of them do have statutory update requirements, like sewer and water do have requirements to be updated by Department of Ecology and Department of Health. Some of them are per your best practices on how you want to update your functional plans. And then the third piece of a comprehensive plan is a land use map. And this is where, and this is where Travis's world is. And this is where you have a map that tells your planning staff and the public and developers what can happen where in the city. And so as you know, we have one here, we're going to refer to that in our afternoon session. But it basically tells, tells you what the zoning is for that property, what can happen on it. And, and then the development regulations, your zoning ordinance, your critical area ordinance then kicks in as well to what, not what type of use can be on that property and then how can it be developed? So those three things are what a comprehensive plan is. It's a policy document, it's a capital facility plan and it's a land use map. And then this is our pie, our pie graphic that you saw in the Planning Commission presentation. And it talks a bit about what the roles are for comprehensive planning updates. The city council, you are the elected policymakers. You will be, you will be reviewing the, the, all the three components and you will be the adopting body. So you will adopt a comprehensive plan and capital facility plan, map, appendices, the whole thing. But your planning commissioners, they're your boots on the ground. They're going to be the ones that are going to be really looking at every element. They're going to be reviewing it in detail. They're going to be asking the hard questions to me and SCJ. They're going to be looking at the Excel spreadsheets that nobody should have to look at, but we have to. And they'll be informing to, you know, to Travis, Christine and I about, you know, what they think is appropriate for Squim and in the question of what do we have to do and what do we want to do? And your professional planning staff, which is your hired policy administrator. So that's going to be your staff as well as SCJ and myself. So we're going to take a breath. Is everyone doing all right? We're going to move on to growth allocations now. So that was a lot, I know. That was a lot on GMA. So let me, let me take a breath. Does anyone have any questions on growth management and its obligations and requirements to the city of Squim before I move on into a little bit more deeper, the next layer
Thank you.
It totally is a fire hose, yes.
But thank you for going through that. I'm assuming that's sort of the 30,000-foot level. And as we get through the day, we'll say, okay, so what does it mean to us? So what?
Perfect, damn, thank you. We started at 30,000, we are literally going to end at sea level by the end of the day. Yep.
And I just want to add for council, while you have your paper copies of the presentation here, we will send the actual presentation to you out after the end of the retreat. We just didn't want you skipping ahead. So you will get this so you can further review it and further digest it as, as you see. Thanks.
Okay, so if you recall, going back to the beginning, one of the things that GMA did that was, was again, new, was establishing a regional approach to planning. And what they established was that counties are required to provide population allocations to their jurisdictions informed by the Office of Financial Management. And so in 1990, 1991, a whole new body of work started at the Office of Financial Management, which is called Growth Management Forecasting. And so the OFM forecasting has taken some twists and turns over the years, but what they do now is they offer a high, medium and low range for counties to choose from. So the, so Clough County picked what's called the medium range, which almost everybody does the medium range because it's not too high and it's not too low and it's just right. So they usually pick the medium range. So that is 86,700 people, new people, no, exist total people, sorry, I always get that. Total people for Clough County for 2045. And, but what has happened with the new housing, the new housing rules is that are the, that prior to this complaint update, we used to plan for population, we used to plan for people. And we still do plan for people, but now they're, they're, they're housing units and people living in housing units. So the county adopted housing units needed. And so they, they adopted in November, 41,716 units. And then you deduct the existing units per 20, in 2020, and that results in 5,968 new units countywide for the whole county. Okay. And I think you saw this like, this was in the Planning Commission packet too. Now, the city of Squim's been designated that 31% of the growth is going to occur in the city. And that's the same, they, they gave that same number to Port Angeles. Sorry, I'm still trying to figure out how to use this microphone correctly. Now that makes a bit of sense because it's the beginning of growth management, they established that growth shall occur in cities. And so obviously the two cities here in Clough are going to be UNPA. So they did allocate 31% and 5% to the Squim UGA. What that represents is 1,850 new housing units designated for the city limits. By 45, right? Now you still have my little note here on the bottom because I really want to make a point of this. This is a growth allocation that started from OFM that went through Clough County and has been designated to the city of Squim. This is not a guarantee of growth. This is not a, it's going to happen. It is a allocation that we must plan for, but the market is what, is what drives actual growth. And there are a number of things that can happen globally or domestically that can affect that market. But our obligation under the Growth Management Act is that we need to plan for that number.
Okay. I was also going to say, I think that just based on the fact that we are very far north in the United States, just in general, that I, this is going to be market driven, but I also wanted to make the comment that it's going to be climate driven. If there's a lot of people that move to this area because it, the other part, further south is becoming hotter and drier. So thank you.
You're right. And that came out of a lot of the public comment that SCJ did. Heard that quite a bit. That's exactly right. Well, I heard that quite a bit. That's exactly right.
So Carla, sorry, just on those numbers, the 31% and the UGA being 5%. Intuitively, I tend to think our UGA is significantly bigger than our city limits. So, but do I misunderstand when you said earlier something about UGA and the city and so on? Maybe I just misunderstand it.
The UGA, these, yeah, are these, is that right? Right, Travis? The UGA is this white between the yellow and the red. So it's, it's all kind of on the outskirts of the city. Yeah.
So I've, I've mistaken that in my mind with the impact that the city has on a much larger area.
That's right. I think intuitively, when you drive around town, you don't realize how big the city limits are. At least I know I didn't until I looked at a map and I was like, oh, okay. Right. And, and the, the way the UGA is going to get developed is 100% utilities. So it's going to be whether the city is extending utilities there or they have provisions for utilities already in place.
And I would just add to that, Dan, that that is the, in this school district and the ZIP code limits go extend far beyond that. And so I think that is part of the, exactly. I think that is part of the reason why so many people presume that because they are in the Squim School District or have the 98382 ZIP code, that they are necessarily city residents. And as you can see, that is not the case. Our sphere of control is, is still quite large, but is not at the, the scale and the size is what some people suspect.
Yeah. And that's such a good point. And Paul's will have the same thing. Like I had that same thing when I was director there where they thought it was this much larger. And I'm like, no, it's just a little bitty four square miles here. But they think of it as being a much larger region. And so the UGA, now you're not wrong in saying there is quite a bit of UGA land there. And 5% of the population was allocated that. And that was really just a standardized number because they did the same for PA. So PA got 31% and 5% went to its UGA. So I wanted to sit here for a minute because this is really where we're going to start talking about where rubber is meeting the road here. And this is a table of the population translated to housing units as, so this, and then broken up by income band. So again, this is a brand new way of planning under the state legislature's directives. The, so the total number of housing units there on that first line is the 1,850 new units. And it is broken again by income band. Now I want to note here, actually I'm going to talk about on the next slide. So the purpose of this by the state, so this purpose statement came from the state is that, again, this was to address housing stock and housing type that could be affordable at various income, very, or income levels. And it came from the, kind of the first set of big amendments done by the state legislature to GMA in 2021. So the, the breakdown by income band was based on, so the income band, I think you probably are all familiar with it, but it's AMI. So that's the area median income. So I put in there what 2024's Clough County's AMI is, which is 93, 900. So then these are broken down by, you know, what you probably are familiar with the different percentages. So we typically talk about 80% or less, although there's some nuances, obviously to that. 80% to 120 and then 120 and above. That's sort of shorthand for how to refer to these AMI breakdowns. But I really, but I do think that what, what is very clear in this number allocation is that it's the 80% or less, and particularly the 30 to 50% that the, the state has allocated to Squim. And I want to make a couple of notes here for you. Cause they're a bit sobering. I know when I looked at them for the first time a couple of weeks ago, I was, it was a bit sobering for that. But let me, let me make some notes here for you all. First of all, this is a methodology that is established by Commerce. So even though Clough County, Clough County adopted this table, this is actually through a resolution that they did in November. It's this table. It's not purple in their resolution. I did that for Squim. But these are the numbers for it. That's what they adopted. So Squim, or so Clough County did not have much say in how they got allocated. They were through an Excel spreadsheet that Commerce provides to the counties. And there's three methods that each county can choose from, method A, B and C. And prior to last year, there was only two methods. But what started happening in mid, kind of first quarter of 2024 was rural, more rural counties were, were having trouble with the method A and B, which were completely designed for urban counties. And so Commerce did come up with a method C that the rural counties are using. So Jefferson County is using method C, Watcom County is using method C and Clough County is using method C. I'm sure there's others too. Those are the ones that I am familiar with. So I wanted to note that there's not a lot of discretion. There's like no discretion. So that is the assignment by the state for this, for Clough County. All Port Angeles, I mean, you saw the numbers, everybody got their numbers. So Port Angeles has their numbers, City Forks, you know, then, then the other unincorporated UGA's and then the rural. Yes.
Quick question about the acronym PSH. I'm sorry.
Yep. Permanent Supportive Housing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what I want to note as well, because you're going to look at this and say, huh, like all the poor are in the cities and the answer to that is yes. So it is the state legislature's opinion as administered by Commerce that the lower income folks need to be located in cities where services and transit are available. So that is why the numbers are sitting the way they are. So if you look at that bottom line for unincorporated rural, you'll see that they don't get an allocation till the 50 to 80% number.
And I have a question. So anytime I'm talking to citizens about housing or even just at the Housing Solutions Committee, it always comes back around to developers are not going to build housing that they do not make money on. And so looking at the table initially was terrifying because it's like, we can't, I can't make people build housing. And so I just want to, one, confirm that. And two, it's our goal is to provide the opportunity.
That's right. And that's what, yes. So thank you. That, sorry. That completely is my next slide. So the city, it is not the city's responsibility to provide for 1,600 units, 80% or less. It is not the city's responsibility to do that. Your role is to remove regulatory barriers, ensure densities can be achieved if a developer, a nonprofit or a housing authority wants to build it. We must plan for and accommodate it. And what that's going to mean, and that is what we're going to pretty much spend the afternoon talking about, is evaluating our existing land use densities, housing types and adjusting those as necessary. So I do know, I did some work with Jefferson County and gave the same talk when the numbers came out. And they looked at me like that, like, how are we supposed to do that? That I'm not going to say that the state legislature might not someday decide that we're all supposed to do that. But for today, you know, that most jurisdictions are not in the developer business. They are not housing, that's what housing authorities are for. Most cities are not housing authorities. They do not, they're not landlords. They are not low income service providers. That is not our job. There, the state legislature has chosen the comprehensive plan to be the vehicle to have these discussions and to ensure that zoning regulations are appropriately adjusted to allow for development by others.
And for clarity too, it's not for anybody that could be listening. It's not the income bands that are terrifying. It is the sheer number of units cumulatively that prompted me to, you know, think I, how am I supposed to be able to make people build housing? And I, I can't.
Right.
Especially when we, these numbers are from 2020, the existing numbers. So the 1,850 starts at 2020.
That's right.
We've already got 900. We got about half of that goal of 1,850 is already planned, right? And those are not in the less than 50%.
That's what I was saying is, is though we may have the 900 or so, we're probably not meeting the band requirement.
Right. And right. And we'll talk about that. But yeah. And so what we haven't done yet, and this will be this kind of like next on my to do list is to talk to Travis and the other planners and get like the, what we call the pipeline projects. And so we'll take that 1,850, we'll deduct pipe projects that have already been built or in the queue for being built from 2020. And then that gives us our net number and that hasn't, we haven't done that work yet. But it is important to note that because 1,850 can feel overwhelming, but we have.
You're going to probably get to this, but it's, feels relevant now. So to follow up on Rachel's saying, if some of the 900 that are currently in the pipeline are on zoned land that did accommodate for 50% or less and the developer looks at the market and decides, I'm actually going to be able to sell it 80% or more. Have we accomplished our, our our responsibility as accommodating it, no matter what the market ends up doing?
Interestingly, yes. It's about the unit type, which we'll talk, actually I'll get to here in a little bit. So, so at this point, it's very interesting that the state doesn't have us do any monitoring about who's living in those units and how much they're making. It's about a unit type that is defined by, and I have a, I actually, once I get through the public outreach part here, we'll talk about that and it will talk about different types of housing and that they assign what number, that 80% or less to each of those housing types. But at this point in time, we're not required. And when I say at this point in time, I just say that because I don't know what the state legislature is doing. They're doing a lot every year and they might get to that. But today, for our purposes, for comprehensive planning, we do not have to manage or try to calculate who, how much people are making in these multifamily units.
Am I correct in my understanding that we're not allowed to create a zoning type that's restricted to affordable housing?
I feel like yes. I don't, I haven't actually heard that question before. I mean, I've heard about doing restrictive use for our uses, like develop a multifamily development and that you're restricting the units for that, but not necessarily like the zone itself. I don't, I, I feel like that might not, I'm going to look at the city attorney on that. I'm pretty sure that it's not legal to do that.
Yeah, I would be, I would be very hesitant to say that we could do such a thing. You know, there, there has been litigation over the years with respect to the 55 plus housing. And some things that has happened there has made me think that that would not be an allow. For example, you know, we're not allowed to regulate, this is a 55 plus only zone. So I would think the, the opposite would also apply with respect to income bands. We could do incentives. We could even probably, you know, do a percentage of a project as mandatory. But in terms of an entire zone, I would encourage councils, council to steer clear of that until say, I don't know, Seattle or somebody else blazes that trail. Thank you. I appreciate that. But think, and you also mentioned that, I was going to bring up a follow up comment, Christina, about the fact that we could, we, we can, and in my opinion, we should have zoning that requires a certain percentage of whatever project it is to be in the affordable housing category. Just some, somehow, some way, I'm, I know we have to just make the opportunities there and we're not a housing authority and all that. But the, the, the housing shortage and crisis is only going to exacerbate if we don't do something to, I don't know. I, I think, I think I'm going to, I'm going to stop there and thank you. I really appreciate that. Yeah, absolutely. And just, and I'm going to look to Travis to verify. I believe our planned residential development has affordable housing incentives in there. Travis is not, so there's some, we've, we've laid some groundwork already. But you know, that I'm sure will be one of the things that we discuss as we move through this process and look at our development regulations and per the state mandate, look at reducing those barriers. So probably something to keep in mind as a topic for conversation as we move through this process.
Yeah. And I'll just touch on that quickly. So that is called inclusionary zoning, which you might've heard that term. And that is a requirement that, that some jurisdictions use. It has been, I will note that it's of mixed success. It's been around for decades. It's primarily back in the day when I was a young planner, the Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond area required inclusionary zoning. They, they, they created a housing authority specifically to help assist with the management and operation of those affordable housing units. So it has had some success. It hasn't been successful in every jurisdiction. If y'all want to go to, if you're interested in this topic, Municipal Research Service Center, MRSE, you can go, you can go search inclusionary zoning and there'll be a lot of documentation in there about that. What the city of Squim currently has is incentives for affordable housing units. So I understand that, you know, you may want to do more and certainly that's going to be, can be conversation as part of when we're updating the development regulations. So we're going to spend a little bit of time just summarizing what happened last, oh yeah, sorry. Yes, please.
I had a quick question. I'm getting hung up on this AMI of 93,900 house. Because compared to what Wikipedia says, that median income for a household is, for a family is 54,000. So where is this number coming?
So that, I know, I double checked that because I was surprised too, that did come, that came from the state. It came from, pardon? Yeah, from OFM. And it's a, it is a, they do make distinctions between different sized households for AMI. And so this was like the largest one. So this would be like the largest household. So this is the number that I believe the AMI percentage breakdowns go through. But I do, I do note that because I saw that number two and I'm like, that seems high. And so I went and double, I wanted to double check that. But I will say that AMI does, you're, you're right to note it. It also differs, like I just said, per household size and what, so you might get a number of, you might see a number of different numbers. Having said that, when we, when we don't have to totally figure out what those people, you know, what that person, sorry, what the actual number of income, what that income is going to be. Again, that we don't have to fall into that piece, but I understand your question. So. Family of four. Yeah. Yeah. I think that that's right. Exactly. Yeah. So the 93 is the highest family. And then in the AMI for a single person or two people goes down. Yes. Good. Thank you. It's a good, it's definitely a good question because that's a big number, right? So, okay. So I want to take a few minutes to summarize what was accomplished last year as far as public outreach and engagement that SCJ conducted. They did quite a few check ins. And so this, and again, you probably saw this from the planning commission PowerPoint. So these are a number of highlights of what they, what they went through last year. I'm going to go ahead and touch on most of them. Cause I think it's worth just, I'm going to, what I want to do, what the reason I'm touching on it is I wanted to provide you guys, if you haven't, if you weren't able to go to all the things, kind of what the feedback was. And SCJ has done summaries for some of these, but not for everything. So I went in and got it, got all the summaries for you. And the reason is like, because I want you to hear what kind of emergent themes are. And they probably aren't going to surprise you too much. But the March 2024 stakeholder interviews, this was Bill Grimes with SCJ meeting with a broad spectrum of people, including your Chamber of Commerce, the county, education, tribal, nonprofit, arts, economic development. So there's a number of emergent themes and he, I, he has a summary of this that actually is on the website. This one's posted on the website. So if you're curious to see what, what came out of that. But I think that that list there, you guys probably aren't going to be surprised by any of the things that came out of there. The, the June 2024, so that was their three day studio. How many of you were able to go to any? How many of you were able to go to any of that? Okay, fantastic. So that was the, their big effort, that was kind of their, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, so that was their first kind of introduction to what they call scenarios, land use scenarios that we're going to talk about here in just a few minutes. And they introduce some concepts about, you know, how should we, how should the city take a look at distributing the growth or managing the growth citywide? So some emergent themes from there is, you know, downtown is priority. The squim's a good place to raise a family. It's not just for retirees, right? The, we should help and consider affordability. How can the city help with that? Retention and recruitment of jobs is important, preservation of rural and open spaces and water resources. Yep.
So just a question on the clarification on the downtown squim is still a priority. Is that a positive or negative? Because I've heard that sometimes the city is too concerned, too focused on downtown and not enough on, you know, east to west side. So I just wanted a clarification on if that was a, a negative comment.
There was a, it was meant to be a, don't, the way, well, let me just say, the way I interpreted it was that it's still a priority, meaning that it was positive, that, yeah. But I can understand that you might get that other side. So the, there was a September 17th future land use scenario workshop that was held at, Guy Cole, did anybody attend that? Okay, fantastic. So as you recall, he, the SCJ was able to take the concepts that were presented in the three day studio and refine them into what they call scenarios or what I'm going to call land use scenarios. And that was, there was three that were presented there, status quo, downtown emphasis, Washington Street nodes emphasis. And I'm going to go into more detail about these three scenarios. But in general, what he, what SCJ had was y'all broke into groups, right? And had sat at different tables and you did a SWOT exercise. And that's your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And you talked through the, all of those for each of the three scenarios and then reported out to the group. And I'm going to tell you what those are in just a couple of slides, but themes that were not necessarily related to the scenarios were what I'm reporting on this slide. So small town, unique feel, diversity of housing types that came up quite a bit. Healthcare provision and retention is important. And I was sort of surprised at how often healthcare was raised. Healthcare retention and accessibility that, that popped up doesn't seem like a very important comment. Infrastructure planning, concerned about congestion and improved walkability, parking in downtown. So the next day, SCJ met with housing professionals and these included a number of builders and I'm not sure who else, were you part of that? Okay, was it developers too or just home, home builders who were part of that group?
Kind of a mixed bag. It was our local developers. They all do a range of things, so small scale to larger subdivisions. So, yeah.
Okay, cool. So that's good. I mean, it's really important to hear from them too, because they're going to be the, the folks who are going to be building the housing units that we're, you know, planning for. So this highlights the summary, you know, kind of gives you the summarization of it. I wanted to just to point, I wanted to speak, speak a little bit to the last two points, though, habit versus opportunity. This is really actually very important and I've seen it in the other jurisdictions I work into where especially if a lot of your development, if most of your developments from your local developers and builders, they have, they have a business model that they run, they have banks that will loan the money based on that business model and they are very comfortable building their business model. What we're going to be asking them to do is to do something different than their business model. And that's because single family detached is their business model in Squim and that our housing, the housing that's going to be needed is a variety of housing types, not just single family detached. And so what was really interesting to hear was that they were open to that idea, at least as reported by SCJ, that they were open to looking at different building types. They were eager, eager to try it, but, and this is their caveat, provided that. And what, where this comes into play for the city is that carrying costs, I mean, I'm sure you all know, you know, what that means, but what that means for them is the loans that are necessary in order to, between the day they decide they want to develop and the day they can build something. And between that two times, that's where the city planning and permitting department is essential. And, and sometimes that can be if they have all their, all their pieces and they do their QC and they turn in good applications, it can be quick and it can also be years. And that's where those, that's what the state legislature was trying to address in the permitting in that slide where I talked about the different changes they made. We call it SB 5290, but it's where they establish timelines because the carrying costs is where developers are going to stop. They're just going to stop and they're going to go with what they know they can do. And so that is a, that's a good note for, for Christina and Travis and the team to, when we take a look at, which we're already talking about when we all take a look at the permitting process and procedures and timelines, because it does, what, what happens here does actually matter out in the market and what type of housing units can get developed. And I was, in fact, I was just talking to one of the other, one of the folks in the engineering department about a develop, one of the things I did when I was planning director in Paul's bow is I would ask developers a lot like, okay, tell me why you're developing in Paul's bow. What is it about here that is better or, you know, that you're finding better than other jurisdictions? And what they, what they would say is like, we, we have somebody we can talk to. There's a person who answered the phone. There is, we know, we can read your code and we understand it. And we know that when you tell us you're going to do something, you do it now. Gosh darn it, doesn't that sound like that should be how things are? But it is not on the I-5 corridor. And so you have, we do have an opportunity to build on the good work that the planning team already is doing to provide efficient, well communicated permit processing. And maybe the habit versus opportunity can, can shift a little bit to opportunity and less from habit. So we have an opportunity here, city has an opportunity here to, you know, to continue to improve processes, to show the development community that Squim is a good place to invest and to take a risk. And then it is also related under the mixed use possibility because again, the mixed use possibility is a financial risk for developers. I have spent the last two years working and researching and reviewing what mixed use looks like in a number of jurisdictions, everything from Paul's bill, Bremerton, did some work for City of Everett. And essentially the developers need to be able to build residential units and they need to have flexibility about what that looks like. And so the day of like commercial first floor, residential second and third floors is actually not financially feasible even, except for Seattle and Bellevue. And so even the city of Everett is looking at, and city of Bremerton has already done it, city of Spokane has already done it, where they're allowing residential uses on the first floor. And so that is something that one of the 30,000 to C level, like we can start talking about what does mixed use look like in Squim and what can you live with and what can you not live with? Okay, so we have a survey that's actually still available online, but I think we should close it down, so I'll talk to SCJ about that. They haven't really put together a summary of it. All Christine and I will ask SCJ to do that. But some of the things they reported out is listed here, they provide, they provide, reported that out at the, the September, the September workshop by Guy Cole. And then the final column here is a, Bill attended the planning commission meeting in December where they talked about the vision statement. And basically, if y'all have gone into the complaint recently, the vision statement is like four pages long, is kind of long and has a lot of words. And so SCJ is just saying, hey, let's like, let's edit that. And so they started some conversations with planning commission about what kind of editing down that vision statement could look like. Those of you that are familiar with vision statements, they typically are, they can be a paragraph, they're usually between four and 10 sentences long. So there's definitely an opportunity to really focus that in during this complaint update. And SCJ is just like, let's make it shorter, let's, you know, lessen the use of jargon, let's reflect the preferred growth strategy or the scenario and, you know, and add more words as guiding principles as opposed to having it all in this four page vision. So that is the summary of what, what we heard. Now I have a slide here to take a moment. I'd love to hear if you guys would like to take the time. I do have about five or six more slides before we break for lunch. But I would like to hear if there was anything else that maybe you didn't, that I didn't go over as like the report out of, of last year. But I also would love to hear like, what is important to you from those things that the SCJ did last year? What are important to you? What did you hear was important to the community? Is there anything specific that you want to make sure that, you know, that the planning team understands before we start, you know, as we start embarking on the complaint process?
Guess I'll start. So pretty related. One of the things I often hear when we're talking about housing is a lot of citizens, I think, I, I think it's human nature to be afraid of change, frankly. And, and so hearing about so many units coming in, people are afraid to, you know, like what kind of housing is it? And what kind of stereotypes does that make them think about or what kind of stigmas? And I think it's really important, if Vicki was still here, I'm, she'd probably agree with me, that, you know, I have lived here pretty much my whole life. I lived in, you know, Tacoma, Port Orchard, Bremerton area for a couple of years when I was a young adult, but for the most part, I have been here my whole life. And I think that it's really important to remind people that that community feeling that you move here because you love that feeling, that I'm 30, almost 35, and that feeling has not gone away. That feeling has been here as long as I've been here. And so I think it's really important to remind people that have lived here for a couple of years or five years or 10 years, like that feeling is dependent on the people that live here. And so being really mindful of just because you get new houses or new units or new apartments or any type of housing type, it doesn't mean that that small town community feel will change. And it, it gets really frustrating when people get passionate about not wanting housing, not wanting certain housing types because of, well, just to be frank with an example, we don't want apartment people because of the stigma that apartment people bring. And it's like, I am an apartment people, you know? And so being really clear and mindful about change that happens does not have to affect the feeling that you loved about this place. And so that was just one thing I wanted to bring up. And another, for the roundtable, what we hear about is important to the community is a lot of public space and that small town feel of being able to walk past somebody and say, good morning. I remember living in Tacoma and I walked past somebody and was like, good morning. And my husband's like, we don't, we don't do that here. I was so like taken aback by that. So, yeah, just reminding people, you know, you are what makes this community so amazing and so warm and cozy. And, yeah, I think I'll stop there.
I know this isn't my retreat, but I will ask or reflect back on our recent resident survey and managed growth was one of the top things they asked for. It was that we ranked the lowest in, and yet it was the most important to them. And I'm not sure if that was, they wanted more managed growth or less, but they, it's a, we need to figure that out. And I think what they said is just a well planned community, like we just need to get around smoothly. We need it to feel like a, like a well designed community. So that'd be my first thing. Second thing, I mean, if we're just round tabling, you mentioned the role of counsel as a policy folks, and I think everybody understands that. Planning commission you mentioned were the work forces and I hope they know their role. I know I attend most of those and we've got an amazing planning commission, great leadership there. But, and I know you've went and I missed, that's probably the only one I missed in the last two years, three years, was the one that you presented this to them. So I, I think they will be wonderful for you, but it sounds like we need to make sure they're on, on, you know, on task or they know what's coming and their role and stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing as we don't, you know, I have concerns too with when we're talking about managing accessibility and transportation, that we have this big unincorporated area surrounding us. I mean, Sunland alone's got 900 homes and the ability for them to access goods and services within the Squim city limits in a way that doesn't require them to get in their vehicle and drive. You know, there's great walkability downtown here, but how do you get the people back and forth? And then I also see a lot of comments, and I know there was a meeting recently about water resources. And one of the things I don't, I know within the city of Squim, we have good planning for that, but I don't know what effect the unincorporated areas could eventually have on our aquifers and our resources within the Squim city limits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Thank you, fellow counselors. I was also, water was also at the top of my mind. Just being mindful of drought resilience, went to the forum that was hosted here in city chambers and one, the hydrologist mentioned that as current trends continue, we might be pivoting from a rain, excuse me, a snow dominant watershed to a rain dominant watershed. And that has big implications for how water is used and managed and what can we do as a city? I know that it's in several parts of our code, we talk about encouraging drought tolerant landscaping. So that's, I don't know. I hope that, I, I want, because the other, the other piece here is that data shows that lawns are the most heavily irrigated crop. As if, when, when you look at the data, it's referred to as a crop and it's the most heavily irrigated thing in the United States. And so that's just a really, I, I think, a really irresponsible use of land. And in terms of being responsible to everyone, to make sure that the water is available for everyone, for the farmers, for, for running your dishwasher and, and cleaning your, cleaning your house and cleaning your body and all of those things. And so that's a big concern for me and I've heard that from many people in the community. And the other piece that's really important to me that I'd like to include in today's conversation is preserving Gary Oaks in the Prairies in, because this is a, this Gary Oaks are native to this area and there's some stands of Gary Oaks that are not on city property, specifically the one across the street from Red Dog Coffee. I think that that section right there is a very, it's a character, characteristic of Squim. It's a very kind of a lot, it's our identity, I would say, that, that plot of land. And it's not zoned to be, it's, is that, that space, if I'm not mistaken, is an opportunity space. And so that would be something that I would like to discuss today. There's been some presentations at the Squim Parks and Arbor Rec Board from local, from scientist, a person who has been working in this area. scientists, a person who has been working in this area. And I think that we need to be really careful about making sure that that character of the Squim Prairie, that there's some spaces set aside that, oh, bonus, they also have Gary Oak trees on them, to make sure that we're preserving that, that flavor, that, what characteristic, I'm not having a very, not, don't have a, well, cohesive set of words to describe it, but just our character in terms of the prairie, and making sure that it's also protecting endangered species and trees. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
I will just also mention that what's important to me is also the infrastructure, just because a lot of people forget about everything that's, that they don't see under the ground. And, and so, the infrastructure piece is a really important one to me, and especially since, you know, there's about 8,000 people in city limits, right? And so all of our infrastructure services those people. But we also have a surrounding, you know, up to, what is it, 20, 30,000 people now that use, also use our infrastructure? And so it's really important to remember that just because the number of people within our city limits is so small, it does not end there for us. And so that's a really hard facet that we have to work with.
Thank you. What else? Yes?
As, as someone who, who lived almost full-time in an RV, and I've become aware of others who are living, have tried to get county land, or even own a parcel, have an RV, it's connected to electricity, sewer, and water. And yet, if there's a complaint, the county forbids them to, to continue living in that RV. So, you know, where, where do they go? And when we had the overlay for manufactured home parks, which was a wonderful step forward, because those people feel so insecure, because there's no rent controls at all, which also happens in RV parks, that the fees they have to pay can go up to, in recent years, they've gone up from 400 to maybe 800 a month, maybe double that in summer. And a lot of people are dependent on these, sort of a hidden subculture. There's been, I haven't seen, or, there hasn't been discussion on provision of new RV parks that would, you know, manage, like, like the one at Gilgal's a beautiful example of a locally-owned one, where the rules are enforced, there's no problem with drugs, or this and that. And it's a beautiful community with positive peer pressure and all of that. And it's a good starting point for people coming here to then later get a house if they're able to. But something, something like that in some places, well, I think in poor towns, and they even have a kind of experimental tiny home community to kind of, as one way to address the lack of shelter in the community. And, and in other counties, the county has given land
Sorry.
for, for free to establish, like, mobile home parks, or tiny home communities, or something like that. And I just haven't seen discussion or the possible development or going forward in, in that kind of way in either the city or the county here. And I think with so many climate refugees and everything, from burnouts in California, which I had neighbors who were forced out of there, or temperatures over 120 all the time, they just couldn't tolerate it. I see there's going to be need, almost for emergency accommodations here, to, to take the flood of, of people that, like all of us who've moved in the last 10 years, who see the, the benefits of living in a, in a beautiful climate and community like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're gonna move another layer down from our 30,000 feet to 20,000 feet. We'll probably get to about 10,000 feet here, and then we'll break for lunch. So, what I want to do is talk a little bit about the three scenarios that SCJ developed as growth strategies for the city. That was the discussion of the September 17th and 18th Planning Commission Workshop. And they were presented, so concepts were presented in June at that three-day studio, but then they were further refined again for the September. And my understanding is these concepts came from work that SCJ's done in other communities, as well as their stakeholder interviews, and from input from the planning director and staff at the time. So, yeah, okay. So, scenario, so this is from SCJ's documentation, and I'm gonna, we're gonna walk through this because in the afternoon session, we are gonna talk a little bit more detailed about these three scenarios. So, scenario one is the status quo, and that's a continuation of basically the current land use, the zoning and the densities as, as it is today, which is primarily going to be the yellow, the low-density residential. You're gonna have greater densities are allowed as mixed-use in the downtown, and some of the, the commercial mixed-use zone. The, there's gonna be commercial unemployment opportunities along Washington Street, and the planned resort overlay enables the development as the John Way Marina. And, but I will note, which I say with all three of these scenarios, is that we have to address the housing by income ban requirements from the state. So, scenario one would be status quo, but, and addressing the housing by income ban. Status, scenario two is the downtown emphasis, and that is taking, adjusting zoning standards to allow for taller buildings with increased densities within the downtown core, and that would be downtown core, and then perhaps even adding in downtown core one and two zoning districts, which are on the, on the, at the sides of it downtown, you know, around, around the downtown core. Oops, I'm sorry, gully. The bad, bad table meat here. Excusing the, the rest of the city's gonna remain the same, and again, need to address the income ban requirements. And then scenario three is taking an approach that you're spreading growth along Washington Street in nodes, and that's these red outlined areas here that is depicted on the map. And these are areas that are already zoned, they're not residential zoning, they're different commercial zoning, but identifying them as opportunities for mixed-use, incentivizing mixed-use residential within the commercial zoning districts in addition to the downtown. And again, need to address housing by income ban requirements. So those are the three scenarios that SCJ developed last year and presented to the community. So, again, I know this is another text-heavy slide, but I did want to go over the responses. And so, for those of you that were there on September 17th, feel free to add in there. But the, the tables were asked to address each scenario, again, through that SWAT exercise, and come up with pros and cons for each of the scenarios, which they did present out. Now, most of the groups actually favored the elements of scenario two and three. And this is just a summary of what I, I heard when I watched the meeting, that scenario one has the potential to be sprawling and present infrastructure challenges. Scenario two seemed that if we were putting all of our densities in downtown, that that might change the parts of downtown. It might change completely the character of downtown that we all really like. It might become too urban. So the buildings would have to go up to five to six, probably at least five stories to accommodate that growth. That would have some impacts on parking and congestion, and then again, as well as changing the character and the feel of downtown. So scenario three might be just right. So it might be the right balance between keeping the downtown the way we like it with opportunities, or is already opportunities for mixed-use buildings in the zoning code today for the downtown, but then providing those same opportunities to some of the other commercial zones along Washington Street corridor. And then also, a combination of all three was also raised as an option at the workshop, where, like, we could take the elements of one that we like, and elements of two that we liked, and elements of three that we liked. And so those were the responses that, that came out of that workshop. And they also had, one of the last things that the groups were asked for is, what are some of the things that you want, want, you know, us to keep in mind, the consultant team? And, you know, support the small-town feel and character Squim in any of the growth scenarios. And I appreciated that they gave some examples of what that meant. That meant architectural design standards become more important as you do increased densities. Keep the building heights reasonable. I certainly can appreciate that. I spent many years in Paul's boat talking about building heights, and so I, I totally understand that. Support walkability, things that you guys also talked about. Again, the medical services and healthcare accessibility was brought up a number of times. Parking strategy was raised, mentioned a number of times, public transit or a shuttle. And then multiple routes between town and, and into these commercial areas and outside, I heard, again, as part of that conversation. So those were the responses that from the workshop. Okay. So, for those of you that were at the workshop, did I miss anything? Okay. So we are gonna move to a little bit of a technical part of, and then I think I've got three slides. Okay, and then we'll be done. So, okay, so I'm not gonna go over too much. So we're still right on time. All right. So we're moving now down to the 10,000-foot level, and I'm gonna talk to you about a land capacity analysis, which I do admit is a, you know, is one of those planning technical parts that, as a city council members, you don't really need to worry about. But in the sense that you need to understand what it does, and there are gonna be some parts of it that you need to make some policy decisions on, that then will go back to the mathematical formula. But basically, a land capacity analysis is a way of calculating how much land can be further developed. So we look at vacant land, and we looked at what we call underdeveloped land or underutilized land. And there's a whole set of assumptions and methodologies that we use to determine that underutilized land. And again, Washington State Department of Commerce has guidance for, for, for us consultants to, to use when we're putting together an LCA. So for, for Squim, SCJ, and then they subconsulted, they did a subcontract with Leland Consulting, and they did the preliminary land capacity analysis for Squim. And Leland, I've worked with them a number of times, they're excellent. They did, they did an excellent Excel spreadsheet for us to look at. But essentially, what we do is we take a look at what land is available, and then we look at the zoning per that, for each parcel, and then we determine how many units can be built on that piece of, on that property. And it, before the income ban became a thing, that was the, that was the exercise. The exercise was taking a look at, you know, net acreage times zone density equals so many housing units, and then you take those housing units, and you multiply it by the average household size, and that told you how many people you could accommodate. That was literally the last 20 years of GMA, that's what you did. Today, we look at, we go to vacant land and underutilized land, net acres, and we look at the zone density, and we look at what types of housing are allowed in that zone density. And then we determine whether or not it can be, it can meet the income ban. And, and so these last four bullet points are very important, because this is what Commerce is telling us now. We look at, as part of our, our land capacity analysis, we look at what is the, what is the available moderate-density housing units? What are the low-rise multifamily units? What's the mid-rise multifamily units? And what are ADUs in other, other smaller types of, like cottage housing or middle housing? So we look at single-family detached, and then we look at those three, moderate-density, low, and mid-rise. And that's how land capacity analysis are now done under today's new housing rules. And so what is Squim's results? The results are that there's sufficient available vacant and underdeveloped land to meet the Clough County growth target, the growth target, the allocation of the 1850 by Clough County. The largest capacity is in the R48 zoning district, which is the yellow, and it's the primary single-family detached zoning district. There are others, the other zones in the city where there's substantial land use capacity are the community mixed-use district, which is the SMU, which is the purple, the lifestyle district, which is the orange there on the northwest corner of the city, and then the planned resort, which, as you know, is down in the, down here on the right-hand side by John, and so by Squim Bay. And so those are the three that have, are, other than R4, the R4 to 8, which is residential four units to eight units per acre. It's, the other ones are, again, community mixed-use, lifestyle district, and planned resorts. The other zoning districts have some capacity, but they're, it's small. It's like, you know, 25 or less. And so the current zoning allows for up to four plexes in the R48 through a planned residential development. And then multifamily residential is allowed in the commercial mixed-use, the downtown core, the downtown core one and two, and lifestyle district. Okay. But there isn't a multifamily zoning district, and the multifamily units are not identified, you know, as a standalone option completely. You can do some in specific circumstances, but in general, standalone multifamily. So, I wanna lay the land, because that is going to be what we're gonna talk about in the afternoon session. And so we're gonna need to identify the zoning, what zoning districts to evaluate and encourage low and, low and mid-rise multifamily units. So that, essentially, that's gonna be, like, that's the main task of the comp plan update, is gonna be doing that. And, but I will say that that is consistent with at least the public input that I was reading and listening to, that the, the community does seem to desire to have a variety of housing, wanting to see a variety of housing types, and more housing types. That, of course, I mean, just the, the premise of economics is supply and demand. So if we have the ability to increase our housing stock, even at different, different price points, that, that, through that law, that we'll, we'll have some more, you know, additional price points available. So, right now, the preliminary LCA per income ban shows that there is a deficit for housing units per our vacant and underutilized land for the 80% or less, and that should not really surprise us, based on that table that we looked at earlier this morning, where 1,600 of our 1,800 units have to be in the 80% or less. So, now, again, Commerce defines the 80% or less as that, that, or the low-rise to mid-rise, though, that's what they define as needing for 80% or less. The moderate density is 50 to 80%. Then low-rise, mid-rise are 80% or less, and then the ADUs in the middle housing is that 50% to 120%. But mostly the 50 to 100, ADUs and middle housing is 50 to 100. So I know I don't have it up there for you. I can give you some, you know, I can send you to Commerce if you want to take a look at their tables, to the guidance document. So, for lunch, okay, I'm almost done. For lunch, so this is my cliffhanger for y'all, is think and discuss, be thinking about it. If you want to discuss it, it's fine. If you guys are like, I do not want to talk about land use for the next 55 minutes, totally understand. But here's what we're gonna want to, what we are gonna talk about in the afternoon session, which scenario, and why, you know, we're gonna talk about that. How and where to encourage the mid and low-rise multifamily housing, the consideration of a designated multifamily zoning district that Squim does not have right now. Is that something that you would like to create? And then And then or and or do you want to allow for additional multifamily types in the R48? Right now it's four plexes through a PRD, a plan residential development. So I really appreciate y'all hanging in. That I know that was a lot of information, like a lot. So I'm happy to answer any questions. If you'd like to just come up and have a conversation with me during lunch, certainly happy to do that. Otherwise we can take our break. And I have a few things that we printed upstairs and I'm going to bring down for our afternoon session. But again, thank you very much. I know I appreciated your engagement and your attention.
Well, if you say fire, you know, drinking from the fire hose and in that I understand that it was a content rich morning. So I just want to, this is the beginning, like today, if you want to think of it as this is the kickoff for the policy document and there's going to be, we're going to be talking about the comprehensive plan this whole year. We're going to talk, be talking about it substantively. Your planning commission will be, and so, you know, what we're, what we're gonna, what I'd like to try to accomplish by three o'clock is to hear your preferences on how to meet the income band requirements for the attached housing units. And so we'll, we'll get into that. But I guess I'll say that it was, it was in fact, the state legislature's direct intent to have jurisdictions like Squim, but not just Squim, have these conversations about multifamily housing. And so we can take a look at this as a, the state's making us do it, or take a look at it as an opportunity to say, okay, the state's making us do it, but we get to actually have a say in how we want them to look, what they're, what type, and where we want them to go. And, and again, I think that that can be aligned with what at least I've kind of heard and read is the, is part of the public engagement and public input received last year. So with that, just know that, you know, I'm here as a resource. SCJ will continue to be your main consultant drafting the comprehensive plan. I'm working more as a, you know, adjunct planning department. So I'm not, I'm coordinating with SCJ, but I'm coordinating and working with SCJ on behalf of the city, as behalf of like a city agent, so to speak. Okay. So with that, we're going to move into our afternoon session and appreciate again, everybody, everyone sticking with us. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what technical work got done in 2024 and to lead us up to talking about the work plan for 2025 and the comprehensive plan. So while most of the work that was done in 2024 by SCJ was public engagement, there was a number of behind the scenes things happening. And so this slide goes through what those are. And this was in the planning commission slideshow, so this might be familiar to you. But I'll talk, the first one is, I'll just mention that a little bit, that the commerce develops these checklists that jurisdictions are supposed to use to help provide your gap analysis, meaning which compares your comprehensive plan to all the state legislative changes since your last comprehensive plan, which would have been 2016. So there was a lot as, as we already went over. The second one is the land use scenarios and vision, which are, we already talked about in the morning session, the land capacity analysis that I gave you guys a hot, you know, kind of high level introduction to, the draft housing needs assessment. So I will park a little bit here in that, that is a new-ish requirement of the, the housing element. It encompasses a lot of the requirements under the, the new, the House Bill 1212 about all the things that need to be in the housing element. So this is that, you know, when I was telling you that I'm going to go over some technical doc, tech, tech, sorry, technical work, but it would actually be an appendix in the comprehensive plan, like the housing needs assessment is going to be an appendix in the comprehensive plan. But that's where we're going to do like a city profile and some demographics, but then we'll show the land capacity analysis, we'll show the land capacity analysis by income band. And then we'll have a section in there that talks about how we're addressing that in the new comprehensive plan. And also the racially disparate impacts analysis will be in that section as well. disparate impacts analysis will be in that section as well. The transportation master plan. So then moving to our, the infrastructure piece of it, the capital facilities plan. So your public works department heads up updating your utility plans and your transportation. On the transportation master plan is, is important piece to that. And so I just wanted to pull that out. The GMA does have very extensive requirements for what needs to be in a master plan or in the transportation section of your comprehensive plan. So your, so the engineer has initiated that master plan effort. The existing conditions component's already been done and the, the traffic model is completed and calibrated. And I can say that I don't know too much about like what that is, other than I know it's a big deal. So that it's, that it's done, it puts us, puts the city in a really good position.
And I'm not the subject matter expert, but I do know that I've mentioned to council several times that there are still at least, well, four to five work sessions that we wanted to have. Three of those are from public works and they have to do with the master plans. So you'll have a minimum an hour on each of those plans and how they roll in. And so you'll get close to those details. So.
Fantastic. Yeah. And so the way that works is that will the master plans get developed and their standalone plans that you all will consider and, you know, approve. And then as part of the comp plan, capital facility plan that I was telling you about earlier, the capital facility section will summarize each of those functional plans. So the functional plan is the route, that is the method. And then the comprehensive plan pulls out those important pieces that GMA requires it to sit in there. So that's why the transportation master plan and the utilities planning are really important because they're independent pathways, but they're parallel and they eventually will inform the comprehensive plan. So all good work, kind of behind the scenes, so to speak, last year. So, you know, you guys are in really good position for this year. So I wanted to just pull out some highlights of the housing needs assessment. These are just some, some of the data that's in there. There's a lot more data that's in the housing needs assessment, but for the first half of it, or even the first three quarters of it is, is almost like a demographic study. So, and again, this is something that Commerce actually gives you like a checklist, like your HNA needs to have this, and then this, and then this. So we just follow that checklist. Leland Consulting did the housing, again, they're a subcontractor to SCJ. They've done a ton of these. I've been in conversation, I've been in communication with them. They did a, a pretty good job with, with it and there, we're still refining it. So we're getting close for it to be completed. But I did want to note that they did at the very bottom, they did the income band gap analysis. So again, this is that, what I was saying earlier in the morning session where we compare our land capacity analysis, like what available land, what's zoned at, what type of units could be built there. They compare that then to the numbers given to us by Clough County. So we have that deficit of that 16, 1698. Now, when we compare it to, or we need 1698 units, and then when we compare it to what we can do on the available land, there's the deficit of 481. And that's partly what we're going to talk about the rest of the afternoon is where should that 481, where should we plan for it? Because again, no obligation that we're going to build it, but where do we need to make sure barriers are removed? Adjustments to our zoning ordinance have been made in order for those units to be built. Now, the 80 to 120 needs 19, and that's like, you know, those could be 80 U's. Like, do we expect that we might get 1980s in 20 years? Probably. And then that would meet that one. So I think that, that one, I'm not too worried about being able to respond to.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
On the manufactured home parks, I know that calls out 527, but where does that fall as far as pricing? Because part of it is the owning the home, but not the land, and then paying the rent on land. Is that part of the home prices and rental market? Or do we consider that separately?
I think, yeah, I need to go back and ask Leland. I think it's based on the rent and they don't, and they use CoStar, which is some, it's a industry, it's an industry source that we don't, like most jurisdictions don't have access to, you have to pay a subscription to it. So the rents are based on the information that they've received from that source.
So if we have a lot of manufactured home parks, does that decrease the average rent price then? Because that seems low. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I think that that's right. Yes. I think you're right. Is 915. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. A question for you about, and for the group, I suppose, about RVs. So where, do we plant, do we, are we making, do we make a cohesive plan for RV park space? How does that fit in with this project? It's, because it's technically a housing unit, but that's, it doesn't sound like it's something that gets tracked in this, in this mix of housing that we're, we're talking about here?
That's, that's right. I think, so I did talk to the consultant about this because RVs are pulled, are grouped with, with manufactured homes for reporting. And so I asked them to pull out just manufactured homes. And so I, until today, I didn't know that RVs were a thing that we should, I should add to the mix. So no, that's part of me being able to learn from you all what is important. Now, I think that RVs are, I'd have to go back to read the Commerce guidance on how they treat it. I don't think they're going to treat it as permanent housing. I think they're going to, they might consider it temporary and then they, it might to some degree even fall under the temporary emergency housing, but I don't know. But that is a good question. And like I said, it'll be something that I'll add to my list of considerations because they didn't really know that that was a thing. But now I do. So thank you for that. Okay. Anything else on this slide? Yes.
I wouldn't necessarily expect you to know, maybe Christina knows, where are these 16 units of permanent supportive housing? Just, there's a detail that popped out to me there. Is that PBHs?
Yeah, the permanent supportive housing.
Is that over here on Fifth and Fur?
That's only five. So there must be 11 others somewhere else.
Yeah. PBH is my understanding as well, that there's only five. And maybe this is something that we get from Leland as well, but there, I think we have at least one Oxford house in the community. So one on Hemlock. Yeah. So that may be where they've got that from as well. So.
Okay. Is that working? I know. Well, it's funny because I did just, it did just work. So. Dun, dun, dun. I know. Right. I would be like, ah.
Well, I guess while we're, I'll try and stall a little bit. One of my questions, the PBH on, what is that? Fifth and Fur? That sounds right. So, you know, when we're talking about multifamily, like one unit is one apartment, I believe, right? But when we're talking about this supportive housing and how that PBH building, it's one building, but has five beds. So is it, like, that's what we're, there's like a little bit of a flip, I guess, of like, when we're talking about supportive housing, we're talking about beds in the unit?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Got it.
Yeah. Yes.
I have one other question. I'm so sorry. The, gosh, what was the name of that? What's the name of that organization? They run, you and I were there together, the.
Minsky Place?
Yes. Yeah. Lieutenant Colonel Minsky Place, Sarge's Place, Sarge's Place, that one. Is that also permanent supportive housing?
That may be. I forgot that that finished and is open. I see Travis reaching for the mics.
Our code considers it a single-family residence.
Thank you. But that's, but this reporting might have it as beds. And there, and that's right, because the planner, the planning is going to look at it differently than where, where in this data comes from the state. Yeah.
Yeah. So for us, it's, and there's a, there's a couple definitions, but there, the main premise is like 13 people and under, we can consider it a single-family home.
Yeah. So all sorts of things that we will be talking about and learning that we actually haven't had to talk about or learn in past comprehensive plans. So, so I just want to talk a little bit about what the work plan for this year looks like. And before we move on to our line, our discussion about the scenarios and then housing unit types. So the state legislature has moved our, thank goodness, has moved the date from June 30th to December 30th. So the comp plan is due to, for completion by the end of the year.
And is that because they've added so many more?
You would think, you would wish that. I know that they, we'll see what happens. So when, after they added all the things in 2021, 2022, they did change 2024 reporting jurisdictions to December, but kept 2025 reporting till June. And then they did last year, change it to December, but 2026 still sits in June, but hopefully they'll maybe change it for those two. But anyway, we have till the end of the year. So we're going to start writing the comprehensive plan like immediately. SCJ will be taking that work where Christine and I are working with them to get a very specific work plan for them for, to start drafting that. It's our anticipation and based on my understanding of preferences that it will be a new document. It's not going to be selective amendment that it would be being taken as a new document. So it won't be a strikeout or underlying version. Primarily some of that is, I mean, if this is something that's very important to the council, it would be excellent to know that today because most comprehensive plans do not have the amount of narrative in it that Squim's comprehensive plan does. It's definitely much more streamlined. And so my understanding was the planning commission gave some direction about streamlining the comprehensive plan. If that's something that, if I'm saying that to you and you're like, oh my gosh, no, we should have a conversation about that because that's sort of the direction, that is the direction that we're going to be moving towards. It doesn't mean that we're ditching everything. It just does mean that every goal and policy does not need a page of narrative explaining the goal and policy. We're going to keep things that are important to communicate and there will be some editing, you know, to that, but it will be run through the filter of Travis and the planning team that understands and knows what's important to keep and what is kind of extra. So that's the strategy. That's the approach to the comprehensive plan. We'll have the required elements, of course, and then we'll have parks and rec economic development, conservation. As the optional ones, there is a downtown subarea plan that I understand. I'm not sure what the status of that is. That will be something that we'll determine. Did you have a question? Go ahead, please.
Well, more of a statement. I think streamlining is a grand idea, but something that is easily understandable to the public, something that I can give to a constituent that they can easily understand that shows this is what we're doing as a council. It's not, you know, the previous one, you know, uses a paperweight and, you know, something moving away from that.
Okay.
Something that, you know, one-page document that is very clearly defined on what our, our goal is for, and what our objective is.
Perfect. Thank you for that input. I appreciate that. So as we've already discussed, we're going to have new focus areas under the housing and the climate resiliency. So there's a bit of work to do and we anticipate starting that soon. Go ahead, go ahead, next slide. So this gives us some dates here by quarter. Each of these quarters, you know, have some high-level bullet points. As you would imagine, there's a lot of subtasks and work to do under each of those bullet points. But for your, you know, for your purposes, here's what we're anticipating happening. We'll complete the housing needs assessment. We'll get that on the website. Hopefully we'll get some preferences today on the growth scenario and determine that. We'll provide the growth distribution for public works for the transportation master plan. They, they actually need that very soon from, from us. And that SCJ will begin drafting goals and policies. And then quarter two, continue our infrastructure and transportation planning. We'll have chapters, community check-in. And again, we'll adopt the countywide hazard mitigation plan, or you will adopt that to meet that state requirement. Then quarter three, we'll definitely be starting to pull things together and ready to release the draft comprehensive plan and begin reviewing with the planning commission and the development regulations update. And then public hearings at the, towards the end of the year. So I just want to take a quick note on the, on the development regulations. There is, there's a lot that we have to do and there's a lot that we want to do. And because development regulations also has a December 31st deadline, I think the, at least the strategy for today is that it will be a phased approach and that the first package of development regulation amendments that will accompany the comprehensive plan will be the ones that we have to do. And they're mostly housing-related. There may be some elements that are on the docket for staff that have been identified that like we want to make these amendments sooner rather than later, and that might get put into that as well. And then it would fall, be followed up with then things that we've talked about wanting to do that are, that we feel like are needed, responsive to comments that we receive from the development community for streamlining, you know, permitting. And that would be something that would happen in 2026. Yes. Please.
Thank you. You're the only one that can speak this way. So the real exciting part for me that isn't up here, but I know Christine and I have been talking for years about to just, once we get through this plan, then catching all of our code up to be consistent with it going forward. So, you know, a one-time big catch-up. You all have been very supportive of us doing this incrementally, catching them as we go. But once you have set, you know, this, some policies around these major things, then a major effort to, and we'll probably outsource that to get all of that digit, consistent and digitized and available. So that's, that's, that's the final part of this for me.
Any questions? So I wanted to note too, that 2026 has the critical area ordinance update. The way that GMA is written is that you're supposed to have development regulations done by December, but you get the extra year to do critical areas. So we will probably take advantage of that as well. So, and there is new best available science guidance, best of like critical area ordinance update can have its own workshop. But just know that there is some new guidance that's come out from Department of Fish and Wildlife that is being tested in the hearings board right now. So it will be helpful for us to watch that unfold, to know what in the end, the courts are going to decide are, are, what we have to do under that guidance. So.
Can you remind me what, just an example in our context of what a critical area is?
You bet. So the Growth Management Act defines critical area as wetlands, fish and wildlife, habitat conservation areas, critical aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas. And streams are, yeah, under fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Yeah. Fish, fish and mammals and amphibians and some insects. But yeah, so those are, yeah. So the environmental features, those are the things that are to be protected under the critical area ordinance. Yep. Any other questions?
And you're saying that right now, we don't have a critical area ordinance?
You do, for sure.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. It's just the update.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Sorry. So, yeah, yeah. I'll, I will take a second on that because I, I might have spoken shorthand on that. So yes, we, so the city has a critical area ordinance. It was one of the requirements from the very beginning. So you've had it for 30 years. The, as part of the complaint update, you're to look at critical areas ordinances in light of any new, what's called best available science. And that's the standard that the state makes for how to protect critical areas. Department of Ecology has done an excellent job for wetland best available science. And they do periodically update it, which they did do an update relatively recently. Fish and wildlife has finally gotten into, I would, well, has gotten into, has provided guidance on stream buffer widths. And that, there's some, there's a couple, there's some questions on the methodology that went to a hearings board case over in, over on the other side of the bridge. And so just being able to watch that unfold to see what the directive is, what the correct, or what the methodology is that the state wants us to use is going to be helpful. So that is what is happening right now. This year will happen this year and will help inform the critical area ordinance. But I will say that there is plenty to do this year and that adding the critical But I will say that there is plenty to do this year and that adding the critical area ordinance, given that we have the extra time to do it is helpful. So, yeah, thank you. Okay, so we're now going to move into our land use scenarios discussion. Go ahead and I'm going to refresh your memory on the three land use scenarios, but if you want to pull out, so in addition to the slide handouts that I gave you, you can go ahead and do the next slide, Heather. Thank you. I gave you a series of worksheets that we're going to work through this afternoon. So if you want to pull out your scenario worksheet, this will be our first little exercise. So I'm going to, as you take a look at that while I'm again, kind of walking through the three scenarios, and again, understand that these are SCJ scenarios, so I don't know them as intimately as maybe SCJ was here, but maybe Travis, who's sat through a number of the workshops, if there's things that I'm missing, please, please jump in. But you can see from this worksheet that mostly what I want you to do as a council, individual council members, and then we'll talk about it collectively as a group, is what are you thinking about each of the three scenarios? What thoughts, concerns, opportunities, like, you know, worries that you have? And if you have a preference that's bubbling up in your mind to what you think might be, might be the, the right, the, the right weight. But again, I'm going to say this to you guys, and I'll say it again, there is actually no wrong answer here. So truthfully, any one of these scenarios will accommodate the growth projection, the growth allocation from Collum County. The only thing we have to do is ensure the income band and how we do that is really what we're going to talk about this afternoon, but there is no wrong answers here for you all. So scenario one, again, a status quo, keeping, keeping this map here pretty much intact as is. We're going to have to look at some multifamily units in some of the zones for the income band. Next slide. The downtown emphasis, taking a look at the downtown as the primary opportunity for increased capacity. Multifamily, it would need to be multi-story, multifamily buildings within the downtown to accommodate higher densities. Again, we can still look at other housing types in other jurisdictions, but focusing on downtown as the primary location, which would require some redevelopment and some infill. So, next slide. Scenario three would be taking the current zoning map and focusing densities and heights along the Washington Street corridor and some of the already commercially zoned or non-residential zones. It would increase, probably need some, again, would be multi-story buildings where these residential units would occur, but could still also look at other opportunities for other, other types of multi-story, smaller, low rise to mid-rise and, and some of the other zoning districts. Travis, is there anything on the three that you would like to add? No? Okay. All right, next slide. So, let's see, was that, is that the next one or was there one before that? No. So, yeah, yeah, okay. So again, just remembering this is, this slide just is kind of, is actually from this morning session, just reminding you what the participants at the workshop thought about the three, just to help you give some point of reference or context what those folks thought. Scenario one, maybe it's too sprawling. Scenario two, might not be quite right for downtown. Scenario three, maybe it's the right balance or a combination of two and three might work as well. Okay, next slide. Again, as I just said, the, all three can meet the housing unit allocation. No wrong answers here, but we will, each one will have to identify the income band requirements. And that would, does require following up with the development regulations, putting, you know, putting in some new standards for the multifamily. So for your, so what I'd like for you guys to do is to take a few minutes thinking about it and you can jot down whatever notes you want. Well, I would ask that if you leave, if you fill out the sheet, at least to some degree, I'd love to collect it at the end of the, the retreat so I can see your notes. You don't have to put your name on or anything, but it's helpful for me to, you know, make sure that I don't forget thoughts that are important to you. And then if you do feel comfortable, we'd love to hear your preferences. And then after we take maybe five minutes for y'all to do that, or a few minutes, if you're all done, then we'll go ahead. Christine's ready with her Sharpie. We'll go ahead and we'll just record your thoughts and preferences on our, on our East here. So with that, I'll pause and let y'all think about some scenarios. I was going to say, that's a really good point, Dan. You guys don't have to figure it out. Like, that's going to be our job. If you like that idea, the concept is that we do some, maybe some more intensification in downtown, moderate, light to moderate and do it more along the, and the corridor.
I ended up writing for the combination one, just kind of general ideas. Like, I like the idea of nodes from, what was that one? Number three, I like the idea of growing vertically for density. And I think that was in two. And then I like the idea of having more mixed use downtown from one.
Yeah. So if I, sorry, counsel, if I could interrupt, I would like, Carla, do you want me to just write it down as we hear it? Or do you want me to want to go through the notes on scenario one, scenario? How would you like that ordered?
Thank you. So that is every, I want to make sure, is everyone ready to, you need a few more minutes? How are you feeling? You're ready? 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 Okay. Thank you, Christina. I think actually I'd like you to go council member by council member. So we can, we'll start with Dan, if that's okay. Are you ready or would you rather Rachel start?
Then how are we going to do it? I don't know what am I doing?
You're, oh, so if you just, what, what are your thoughts? Give, share your thoughts and if you have prefer, anything that you want, that you wrote down or that you want to share and what you are, if you have a preference, just that page. Yeah. And it's okay if you, if you, it's okay. Fair what you want.
The only, the only advantage I see to one is it's the least amount of change, so therefore be the least resistance. But it creates significant infrastructure challenges. I like the idea of building up, as, as Rachel just said. And I think that could be quite attractive to certain market, market segment. Number three, I like the idea of nodes. I think that some of the business types, residential types and so on, might sort of form a community in those nodes naturally clustering that way. So now that I heard the advantages of two and three, I would land on that, on two and three.
So the combo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I love how you put the positive spin on number one. I, looking at it, I, I agree with what was said in the sessions. I don't think number one is focused enough. I like that number two creates a very, it would create a really walkable core. And in my mind, and I'm, as, the more you get to know me, I kind of think in, I do, I do think in terms of like planting and plants and that sort of thing. Not all the time, but for some things. And I thought, whoa, number two would be really interesting because it would plant the seed of the future city. And so that would be a good piece on that. I like number three a lot because it focuses it around the transit and keeps things, and also I think has a walkability piece in terms of folks being able to walk around within their neighborhood. Like if all these nodes had access or small, like how close is this to the QFC? How close is this on the Safeway? The one next to Costco? Those people are lucky. I'm just kidding. I shop at Costco a lot. And yeah, so that's another big piece for me with number three. And definitely going, going vertical. I'm in the, I'm in the combo camp too. I think that since that, since you're saying that that is an option, that is something we can do, then yeah, let's, you know, have a little bit more of a, allow the future city to start taking shape and, but also keep it spread out or along, along that main arterial.
Great. Thank you. So I'll start with a general comment of, I'm not against vertically growing, especially since so many places, you know, you only have so far to go out. And so making use of vertical space is going to be your most efficient option a lot of the time. So I was just like a generally. So concerns for number scenario one, not enough density near accessible areas. So one of our great, great partners, Collum Transit, right? In Squim, they have the call and pickup system. It's, they don't really have a specific squim route anymore. You just call and get picked up and dropped off, but they don't go to like Elk Creek where there are so many elderly or, you know, so many more people that need accessibility options. And so for scenario one, I wrote not enough density near accessible areas. So like, we would have to work with our partners to try and meet accessibility needs. Scenario two, concern that I wrote down was that I would prefer density and more vertical to not just the downtown area. So not just downtown, but like wherever we can put it, trying to meet all the needs that we need to meet. Scenario number three, I wrote, hopefully I'm not talking too fast for Christina. Oh, excellent. Okay. Scenario three, I wrote increased density, prefer to include multifamily, two, three, four plexus townhomes. So lots of diversity. And the nodes reminded me of what they do in Japan where there's like, there's neighborhoods and they're all mixed use. So you could have like a convenience store right next to this big residential building. And it's been interesting to see how cities grow because like, we don't just exist in our homes. Like we all have to go somewhere to grocery shop. We, most of us need to pick up prescriptions, you know, kids typically go to school. And so being able to have nodes to be accessible, to be able to do all the things that we need to do to live is my preferred option. And so in the combination area, I wrote, I like the idea of nodes. I like the idea of growing vertically for density to really capitalize on that vertical space. And I like the idea of a mixed use downtown because it's so much better than just leaving buildings empty and underutilized.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. You caught up Christina? Okay. Just for those that didn't tell, I do have to leave in about 15 minutes for a school thing. So let's see, number one, I didn't have any, didn't write anything on. Number two, I just, I wouldn't consider if building up because I think that with all the comments that were given during the survey, that it wouldn't really keep with, you know, Squim's character, that small town feel. So I really wouldn't give that one too much consideration. One I would probably go for most far would be scenario three. Cause I think that if we were to concentrate it particularly on the outliers, that it would hopefully help with economic growth on the east end and west ends of town. And hopefully if we were to convert some of the empty commercial spaces into housing, that might be an option. And I think that it would also help that if they're located next to 101, that it'll help, you know, with congestion and stuff like that. And I think also with, you know, Squim size is still easily walkable into the downtown core as well. So that's why I think for me at least, consideration for scenario three is my. So that's why I think, for me at least, consideration for scenario three is my top one. If I were to give consideration to scenario two and three, I think that, you know, if I were to build up, again, I think it makes most sense to do it on those outline areas. Again, because it does have better access to 101, to those economic areas. And I think, I think it just makes more sense than to, you know, drop it right in the middle of town, where I don't think there's the, the space for it to begin with. So it just, it will just have too much of a parking and traffic problem if we were to. So for me, it's scenario three that I would give the most consideration for. This makes more sense to me.
Thank you.
I'm right in line there with Brandon. I didn't feel like scenario one had enough ability to, for out-of-the-box concepts or diversification. Two, I'm a little concerned about because of the same shared things, our downtown, I hate to see it between, at least along Washington, between Sunnyside and Fifth, I hate to see it exceed two stories, just because we may lose that charm. And you think about our big focal point there with the greenery, that's just, you know, that's postcard-worthy there. I really like, I really like three. I like the idea of having the neighborhoods on the far ends, because we've got three major grocery stores. You can have communities develop around those. I also think closer to the highway, for the purposes of, it doesn't seem as big. Like, when you come in from the east and you pass by the Holiday Inn, you're kind of looking down on the roof. So you're not getting the sense of, oh, here's this multi-story building. Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, I would like the idea of some density, I don't know if that's accounted for in scenario three, to have things like, getting away from individual yards and developing little cottage houses that are, maybe they're only 1,000 square feet, but they're around a courtyard. I've never really started paying attention to this place across the street until parking in there and going, oh, that's a bunch of little apartments around a central courtyard. That's really cute. So yeah, I'm, that's all there. So yeah, I'm all on board with scenario three.
There's some houses like that over on Sunnyside by Coop. Yeah. Yeah, I think scenario one is why we're in the position we're in right now. So let's make a change. I'm also worried about two tall buildings downtown. I'm worried about Nicole losing her mountain view. And also, yeah, the downtown has its own character, and I don't want it to look like any town USA. You know, if you go over to the Seattle area and you go to different communities, I can never remember where I am because they all look the same. And I like that we have our uniqueness. And then, and I do like scenario three. I'd say that'd be my top one. I think it's our best opportunity for bringing affordable housing, higher density in the areas, you know, towards the ends of the community. And then, yeah, a way to fill those empty buildings, even if it is using them for housing, I think would be good.
Great, thank you. Of course.
Yeah, I'm on team this side of the table, I think. Scenario one, yeah, it's too sprawling, not enough opportunities for different housing types, too unfocused. Considerations for two, yeah, I think it would just change the downtown character of Squim. And I don't think that would get a lot of public support either. And traffic and parking infrastructure, it would make it more walkable, but people love their cars. So, and scenario three, yeah, I think just more opportunities for different housing types. Using existing buildings would make it easier. So that's, it's my vote.
All right, you guys. Thank you. Really good, really good comments and good thoughts. So I, it's, I think it sounded like the majority was scenario three, but I wanted to check in with Harmony and Dan, because you both were open to kind of the both components. And so I know that this information on scenarios were kind of high level, but there was something I thought we could cap, if there was something that from two that you, that kind of sparked, sparked your interest in it, maybe you could share it, because we could, you know, maybe there's still an opportunity to make sure we capture some of the things about scenario two that you thought. What I think I heard, and I get, is that we don't want too hot, too high of buildings, and we don't want to lose the, the downtown character that we currently have. So we don't want it to intensify to, you know, four to five-story buildings. So was, is there anything that you guys wanted to share to make sure that we can capture what you thought, you know, that what was compelling about two? And it's okay if you, if you don't, I just wanted to make sure I looped back to that.
Probably my, my imagination goes to communities I've lived in before I lived here, where it's just really nice to have an apartment or a condo, two or three floors up, and you walk out your door, and there's two or three restaurant options, and there's a grocery store, and there's a drugstore. And so it's that, that sense of urban community, I guess you'd call it. And I'm not looking, I'm certainly not interested in attracting an urban feel to, you know, the six blocks along Washington. But my guess is there's a certain market segment that would find that quite attractive. And there's businesses that would thrive in that, in that environment. So, but I don't know that if we talked about it in this morning session of what we mean by going up, what the, kind of the lid on that is.
That's right. Which we're going to talk about in just a couple of slides. So, yeah.
That would, that would be obviously a factor.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I'll chime in here. Similarly, I think I was, I've lived, I lived in downtown Portland for a year or two before, after, after college, and before I came back to the home, as it were, not Squim, but Kitsap County. And then I've been here in Squim for five years, and it's been amazing. Just the fact that, you know, a downtown walkable core is such a, it, there's people that would find that really enticing. But at the same time, I think, like what you were saying, as soon as you said, you're thinking, your imagination, is that, that's exactly where I was too. I was just like, wow, that would be a really cool, that'd be really beautiful too. But in terms of actually putting it into practice here in Squim, it would definitely change the character of downtown, and that, that there's something to be said for that. I was, you know, I see also though, that, you know, number three has increased density also in the downtown core, but also the more spread out along Washington Street piece as well. And so I don't know, I think that when I am saying I want the combo of two and three, I'm also recognizing that I don't have all the, like, nitty-gritty details of what's in all of these plans. So I was kind of casting a wider net in that sense as well. Yeah. But in terms of, if you overlay the two, scenario two kind of looks like it's playing out in scenario three. So I just, I think I don't have enough information really to comment further, other than the character of our city is really important to me also.
I think Dan's comment at the end was, was spot on and good thing that we'll discuss in a couple of slides. But when going up is, you know, how high are we going up as well too? Because, you know, looking over there, you know, who's okay with three versus who's okay with, with five?
That's right. And we'll, we'll walk through that, yeah. So do you think it's fair then, as far as some type of kind of consensus or preferences that the council for the, that we can move forward with a scenario three concept? Are you, okay. Okay, fantastic.
That's good, because that's what I captured in the notes. So.
Okay. And then Brandon, did I hear that you need to leave? Is that right? Or you have a few more minutes? Okay. Um, I think then, if I could, since you brought it up, I'm going to switch us to building height, and then we'll go back to middle housing. So Heather, if you could move it to a couple of slides, pass those, and we'll go back to those. Pass that. Yeah, here. Okay. So you have a worksheet on building heights. It's behind the middle housing one, but I wanted to, I'm going out of order just so Brandon has a chance to take a look at it. So a couple of things here. You have, I want you to consider building heights.